Welcome to the June 21st Special Call Meeting of Lynchburg City Council for the purpose of conducting our second slate of interviews for school board appointments, or reappointments to vacancies that will exist June 30th, 2023 in school board districts one, two, and three. We continue to have a packed agenda, completing interviews with members from District Two and all of District Three. Due to the sheer number of qualified candidates, we will keep interviews to 30 minutes. Candidates, please keep your answers concise, and council members, please be prepared with your questions. I'll call on members in roll call fashion, starting with Councilmember Dolan. Let's limit our questions to one per round with the goal of getting to at least two rounds. Again, this is the first time that City Council has conducted these interviews in an open session, and it's important to remember that this public serves, this public meeting serves as a way to have open dialogue between candidates and council members. My expectations for audience members are to be mindful of the process while in council chamber, and as always, applause, cheers, or jeers are not permitted. One housekeeping item before we begin is that we are scheduled to take a 30-minute recess at 2:30. With that, I'll ask Ms. Finney to call on our first candidate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With District Two, we have Joan Pence, followed by Dr. Kim Sinoff.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Before I sit down, I have two pair of glasses here today. I wanted to just give you all a copy of my resume, I was sure if you had.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Wilder was unable to be here today, so Councilwoman Dolan is going to ask his question on his behalf, okay?
Okay. Just make sure. Let me just set up something first here.
Okay. Oh.
Yeah, go ahead, remember.
Great. So for the moment, I'm Sterling Wilder. And his question is, LCS has over 15-plus programs that address learning loss, achievement gap, credit recovery, acceleration, and more. Which program are you familiar with that has the most impact, and what other programs would you like to see to improve the test scores in Lynchburg?
Okay. So, I took some notes. I did show up yesterday to do my homework, so to speak, although I had been doing it. So talking about the, the programs that are in place, we're talking about the, I think Dr. Wilder mentioned the 15 programs. I have to be honest with you, I did find some programs, but in my studies and trying to get across the internet, it's really hard to find the information. I even Googled 15 programs for, to help with learning in the Lynchburg schools, and I didn't find it. I was looking for a tab. It would be helpful to have a tab. So with that being said, let me just have a couple, each of you has your own page in my notebook, so I will try to find what he said. So my first comment to his, to that question that you just asked me was, the programs are hard to find. I did find a couple, and I was thinking maybe the Pedal Program was one of those. That's for the accelerated students. I looked at that, and then I went down and I found the Alternative High School. And the reason I like that, I haven't worked in your alternative high school program, however, when I lived in Atlantic City, back in about 2005 or '06, I was a school nurse in that, in a Christian school where my kids attended. During my time there, it wasn't through that Christian school, it was through some churches. There were about five adults, and I started going with them. We would go to the Alternative High School, which was for mainly emotionally disturbed children, children with drug and alcohol problems, children that were having troubles at homes or were dropping out of school. And so I went with this group of people, and we would buy, we would go to McDonald's, it was, I think it was Thursday, we would get lunch for them, and they, I think the lunch kind of drew them in, so we had like 40 or 50 kids. We set up the room in a circle, and we let them have lunch, and then we tried to do icebreakers, we tried to address problems weekly, like one week it would be suicide, one week it would be alcohol, one week it would be dysfunctional homes, and one week it could be anger management. And I found that program to be tremendously helpful, to get into the community, which is what I wanted to do. So I, I'm hoping that is one of the programs that you have here that's working. I do think this, it needs, the only reason I brought up that it was hard to find is I think it needs to be more promoted and more transparent. We should be able to put it, and I did look at the student handbook, I skimmed through it because it's pretty lengthy. I didn't see it in there, I think you should put something like that in the student handbook, in a faculty handbook, and possibly make a parent's handbook, because that kind of thing needs to be at your fingertips. So that's just something to think about. And it also causes the parents to engage, and I, I know a lot of people yesterday were talking about the parents need to get more involved. Well, that's fine, but how can you get involved? So one of the things that I found helpful to get into the community in Atlantic City, which was on the more difficult end of town, shall I say, was to go to this alternative high school, and I thought that program was good. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll let him view it online.
Okay.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Well, hello. And thank you for your willingness to serve Lynchburg City Schools Board. School safety is one of your primary concerns, as evidenced with your documentation that you sent us. What does that look like, and what policies would you put in place to accomplish school safety?
Okay. Good question, and let me think about it for a second. There's a lot with school safety, and what I have found with the school, I have to speak to my son being at EC Glass, I have, I think I mentioned to all of you in another council meeting that I have a son with Down Syndrome, two diagnoses, and autism. He has a communication disorder, so he stutters a bit, but he, they call him nonverbal. When he was there, like I said, again, I'll mention, the teachers were fine, and no problem with the teachers, I just didn't like the fact that I couldn't, I couldn't get into the school. I mean, other than a tour, and I know there's a lot of parents, but I think parents need to be more involved in what's going on in the school. Because of his communication disorder, I would never know if somebody was sexually abusing him, or, and I'm sure they weren't, but I just would want to know a communication from me, back and forth with my son. And that was a safety issue for me. And when the lockdown started, it was like the last year, he graduated in 2019, there was a lot of lockdowns. They started first maybe once in a while, then it became almost weekly, and I was very frustrated. And during that time, the community at EC Glass held a meeting, and parents showed up, and I was one of them. But anyway, bringing it back to the safety, what can we do? Well, my experience is in 30-some years of psychiatric nursing, and I've worked on really dangerous units, where people hurt you, and people hurt you. And they had different techniques of talking people down, we had training we had to go through, how to take somebody down if you had to put them in restraints, and I know we can't restrain students, but there's ways to talk people down, and there's techniques you can use to verbally de-escalate somebody, and it would be very helpful to do, to try those techniques. I'm pretty good at disarming and de-escalating rowdy kids, or even children that are on a psych unit that were very violent. So you want me to give you a couple of examples of that?
No, I think I understand what you're saying, and I agree. I think more training is essential, and within the constraints that you have, within all the regulations that we deal with.
And I know there's regulations, but...
Yeah, I get that. Thank you.
Councilwoman, questions?
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your willingness to step up and serve. Going to change gears a little bit from yesterday, since somebody's not here, but how do you feel about strict punishment for kids when they're misbehaving? And I'm talking about serious behavior issues, throwing chairs, cussing at teachers, things like that, being physically violent.
Well, we can't have that going on, because it will just get worse. And we know that in our nation right now, there's a lot of lawlessness going on, and I think that children, they're not stupid, they see what's going on, they may not watch the TV, but they're on their phones a lot. So when we see that happening in the nation, it's just further deterioration in the schools, and it's very difficult. My daughter's also a teacher, and she works, and she's told me about the chair throwing and the things you're mentioning. It's hard to dodge a chair, and you don't want anyone to be hurt, but you have to find a way to deal with the behavior. The behavior is not, you're not allowed to spank children, you're not allowed to do certain things, like I said, you can't restrain them either. But there are techniques you can use, and I do believe in strict, pretty strict discipline. But this is the problem, we didn't really talk about gang violence either, which is in War II, and it's around my neighborhood. It's about motivation. I have found that everybody deserves dignity and respect. I don't care what sexual orientation, what, where you come from, what your race, creed, or color, everybody deserves dignity and respect. And what motivates people, I find, in my travels, is they want to be listened to, and they want to be validated, and they want to be heard, and they want you to present yourself as an empathetic person, and not just someone who's yeah, yeah, yeah. I can tell you even myself, if I'm on the phone, my son Benjamin will, he'll start acting out, because he wants my attention. I have just found with children and psychiatric circles, or wherever you're at, if you listen to them, just give them an ear, just say, "What's going on?" And that's why I like that alternative high school technique that we used for the, it was called the Lunch Club, by the way. And the motivation, even gang members. I have probably talked to gang members, my husband and I make a practice of sitting on our porch most mornings, and drink coffee, and we're on a, we're on a road where there's a lot of traffic from downtown, a lot of people that are homeless come to our house, a lot of people have showed up and asked for money or food, and I feed them, I do. But they're not getting away without getting a prayer and maybe the gospel, we'll see about that. But what they want, they want to, they want to be heard. So I'm just saying, in my, from a psychiatric perspective or mental health, the first thing to do is you have to find out what's motivating the behavior, because gang members are getting motivated because they don't get, maybe they don't have a home that's functional, maybe they feel like nobody cares about them, maybe they feel like they're a failure, and the gang gives them that prestige. So, and just for one more thing I wanted to mention, because I don't know if it'll come up in another question, but the child that was murdered in my neighborhood a few weeks back, that's why I said I commended Councilman Taylor on that curfew, because I think it's important, as long as there's an endpoint at some place. I went, and I didn't do this because I wanted to get in the paper, because I didn't get in the paper, wasn't my motivation. I didn't know the person, I didn't know the little boy, I just, my heart broke, and I was like so upset about it. And I made it a point to go to the vigils, there were three that day, I went to each one, and I saw some of the council members at the main one. I met the mother, I didn't know her from Adam, but when I met her, I just said, "I'm so sorry," and I gave her a bouquet of flowers from my garden, and I just felt like that's a way to get into the community. And I said, "I'm going to pray for you and your family." So I, that's, that's what, pretty much what I have to say about the discipline, I think we need to get in and find out what's motivating the kids. I think it should be strict, and I also wanted to follow up the last part of that with the student handbook, I did check it out. There are criteria for discipline. I think there was detention, I did, like I said, I skimmed over it because it was a lot to absorb in the last few days. There's a suspension and expulsion, and none of that's, none of that's fun to do, but we have to have someplace to stop. If you don't stop the behavior, it'll just keep going. And I don't think teachers should be threatened by it, I don't think other kids feel threatened by it. So somebody has to say, "No, we got to, we have to do this." And if they, and you know, I heard someone mention that the parents had to be part of agreeing to it. I don't know, I think that's something we need to look at as well, because we need to get parents more involved in what's going on with their children. I mean, I, you know, my kids were little once too, and I used to get calls from the teachers, and you know, I don't always think the child is right, I think the teachers can be right too. So I think we need to just look at these other options, from the mental health perspective. Did that answer your question? Sort of?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes, praise the Lord, how are you?
Amen. Good, how are you?
I'm doing just fine. Cell phones in classrooms.
Oh, no. When I was teaching in the mental health last couple of years, I think, I didn't make them put it in a basket. Now, I know there's people that have done that, and it works. I told the students, you're adult, because these were, these were adult learners, these were students that were in the first or second year of college, I think it was second year for me, and I said, "You must not have your cell phones on unless you, if you have an emergency, step out during the break and deal, you know, if you want to make a phone call, or you can leave it on vibrate if it was an emergency." So I don't, I think the cell phones are such a distraction, because when I was teaching and lecturing, I, if I could, I could see everything, if somebody was a cellphone under the desk, I would just say, "Can you just please turn your phone off? You know, we're adults here." One thing that was more of a problem in the classroom for me, was all the students had their laptops like up like this, and I was up in the front lecturing, and I wasn't going to walk around, because I get distracted, I distract myself if I walk around in the room. I asked them one day, I did this big, long lecture on something, and I had a point we had to make about the test that was upcoming, and one of the girls didn't hear, and she's like, "Professor Pence, could you go over that again?" And I said, "I just went over that. What are you doing?" She said, "To be honest, I'm shopping for shoes." And I, it really frustrated me, and I, but I said, I said, "I, you know, I like the fact that you're being honest, but could you please not shop for shoes now?" I think cell phones are not good in the classroom, and I think people can, can be recorded that way, and they talk, they communicate with their friends. So I'm not for that, just because I've had problems with it in my classroom.
Bethany Prawley?
Are you good?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you for your interest in serving. I don't know if you were tuning in yesterday, so I do apologize to my colleagues for asking this question.
No, I was tuning in. I know you're, I have a whole page and a half on you.
Okay, great. So ultimately, you know where, where I'm headed with this, and it's, again, it's derived and aimed to impress upon the candidates that my aim is to focus on academics to the degree where we improve our graduation rates. And things that don't help us get to that point, to a large degree, should not be focused on. So it's a goal, it's a vision, it's something to strive for, and anything that takes me away from that, I don't want to put very heavy thought into it. So ultimately, you see the correlations I'm trying to draw, or the lack of correlations I'm, I'm drawing with. It's not just poverty that's holding us back, there are other localities that have a greater poverty rate, that have a higher graduation rate, and numbers all in between. So with that context in mind, the question really is, how will you, as a school board member in Lynchburg, focus on the academics in Lynchburg, focus on the graduation rate in Lynchburg, for the type of candidate, for the type of student will graduate, but also just getting them across the finish line and making sure they're prepared? How will you focus that, on that, to a degree where that's our number one thing?
Okay. Thank you for that question, I think it's, it's very needed, and students do have problems that interfere with academic success. A lot of it can be, can be chaos in the home, it's not always chaos in the home, but that's one of them. Chaos in the home, maybe it's a, you know, a struggling family, or maybe there's drugs and alcohol involved, or what have you. And they're not going to engage if they have trouble in the home, if there's, you know, like I said, dysfunctionality. Also, students, if there's lockdowns and threats of bullying, or gangs coming into the schools, they're also going to have anxiety, and they're not going to really have full learning. They may learn some things, but they won't retain a lot of what they're learning, and that's, you know, that's been studied. So what I would do is kind of what I kind of went over already, a little bit of it, is try to find alternative methods in getting the parents more engaged. And people will say, "Well, it's hard to get parents engaged, they're always busy, they're working, et cetera." One of the things that worked for us, and I'll have to talk about the psych units, because it helped there, there's different things we can do. We did some outreaches in the past, and along with the alternative high school idea, we did, oh, I did cooking classes to get students more engaged in wanting to be in school and to learn life skills. I know that they've taken home ec. out of the schools, but I have a degree also in nutrition and food service, so I can cook, and I, I took my learning into the school, and it motivated them to want to do something. And then I talked to some other teachers, and I also did some, helped with sometimes tutoring with math, which I'm not even that great at, and I was talking nursing math at this point, some nursing math. And I think there's tutoring programs in place and after-school programs that can be in place as well. So to get the scores up, we have to take away some of the roadblocks, and I mentioned, like I said, the distractions coming from home could be one of them, and also the problems with any anxiety going into the school, if there's like a threat of violence. So I think if you remove those roadblocks, you will see an improvement in some of the scores. Now that, I don't know, maybe we need to talk to the teachers, and one of the things I would like to do is go into every school, that would be my goal, and talk to the teachers, the administration, and say, "What are your needs, and how can we help you?" I'm willing to, I'm a grit person, I'll put my hands into it if I have to, that's the way I am, I've always been that way. So another thing I do for helping to, for student learning, is I like to use the Socratic method of teaching, which always helps me, because I know it was hard to engage college students if they didn't like the subject. I would ask them questions, you know, and I, you know, let them think about it. I try to make fun stories and then ask them questions, that's my method of doing that. But parent involvement is important, but you know, like I said, I went to that, that girl, I didn't know her, and her son that was murdered, and I just, I want to build relationships in my community. And I know we've helped, my husband and I have helped Councilman Taylor with, he does the homes and then builds the playgrounds. It's all part of getting to know the community and seeing where you can help. I don't know if that answered your question?
It does, thank you.
Joan, thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome.
What I love about you personally is that you're compassionate, compassionate heart, I appreciate you and your husband taking the time to invest in downtown, and where you live specifically, and the time that you've taken to get to know that part of our city. I love your background and the fact that you understand a component of society that not everybody understands. And even with your, with your son's limitations, that gives you a different perspective than not everybody has, I think that's great, specifically when it comes to our schools. So I think that makes you really a unique candidate, so it's been really great listening to you speak. One of the things that, that we've been looking, I mean, it's a nationwide issue, so it's not unique, unique to Lynchburg, but across the nation, we're seeing increase in behavioral problems in kids as young as fifth, at five years old, we're seeing kids with anxiety problems, having to be institutionalized. We're seeing obviously massive gaps in learning and learning loss post-COVID, because of the school shutting and so forth. What, as a school board member, would you do to potentially contribute to maybe helping with those problems? I mean, I know with your background in psychiatry and behavior health, what things do you think that you could add to the mix as far as addressing those specific issues in the schools, increase in behavior problems, and addressing the learning gap?
The learning gap and behavior problems, yes, that's a good question. I think that we need to tap into some mental health resources, like the Horizon, isn't there? I'm not, see, I haven't been here, I've been here about five years, but I haven't gotten into everything yet. There are some, there are resources we can use, there's probably other resources that I'm not aware of, but I'm willing to do the research and dig around for that stuff. And I'm willing to, we can even start something, I mean, in the schools, we could start a, like I mentioned, even with the alternative high school, we can start a, some kind of a club thing, or something where they can come and talk. Even gang members, like I said, want to be validated, and they want someone to listen to them. So I'm not afraid of people, I get people, like I said, come into my door, I'll talk to them, I'll ask them where they're from, and we'll talk, because that's one of the things I feel very comfortable doing. So I would look for ways to create, I don't want to say another task force, but sometimes you have to start things, and there are people that are willing to look into that. Now, one thing I'm not sure if you're aware of, and I'm going to take a stab and just mention this, a group of women I pray with every Monday, or, there's one woman, it's or two that are directing it, is a thing called Hope for the Future, and it's going to target the high schools. I think they already have a setup thing for September for EC Glass, and I think they're going to do Heritage, where they're bringing in rappers that have a positive message, and then they're going to try to address the mental health issues, but that, like I said, that's just a new thing, it's just something that we're thinking about, because it's a problem. So I would look to do more positive outreach, in terms of getting what we, like some kind of a group, but I don't want to say another task force, but something like that. One of the other things that we had that helped motivate children, little children, when I worked in the psych unit, they had a woman they called Grandma. She was just a community volunteer, and there's so many people that are retired, I'm even heading up that way myself, but that want to help, and they want to volunteer. So Grandma used to show up at the psych unit, I think it was once every two weeks, and these kids would wait for her to come, and she would come in, and it was like Santa Claus was there, "Grandma's here," and they all would start hugging her. By the way, another thing that you can do, that was Grandma, and then they have pet therapy, different things like that. One of the things I did in this, even in the psych unit, because I know you can't bring religion into the units, but I was a Christian, and I had these, I had, you know, I worked on a unit for years with eight-to-12-year-old boys that were from the South Bronx, and these kids had a lot of problems, a lot of bed wetting at night because of sexual abuse and different things. So I asked the director, who was Jewish, if I could, if I could do a Bible study, just a basic kind of Bible study, because they, they liked that, they wanted to talk about that. And so he said, "We should get permission from the parents and guardians," and we did that. I did that for one or two, like one year. Other things I did was the cooking classes there, and there's something else I wanted to tell you, but it's not coming to mind right now, but just finding ways that are creative, thinking outside of the box, we have to think outside of the box, to try something new. And there are, like I said, there's many people that are willing to try these things, and I would be willing to even put something together with that, and, and the board, you know, the school board. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, anything about the, addressing the learning, learning loss?
Yeah. Learning loss, I, what I did, I can only speak from my own experience, maybe, with school. I had children, well, children, I had adults, adult kids, I guess they were college kids, that just didn't do that well. Some of them had ADHD, they had learning problems to begin with, and yeah, there had a lot of them. I had a lot that didn't always catch what I was saying. I did a lot of examples, I would get on Zoom with them at night, I went above and beyond what I had to do for office hours, and I'd say, "Okay, we're going to go over this again," and then I would give them little homework things to do. I know when I was a young person in fifth grade, I had a teacher called Mrs. Jackson, I'll never forget her. She would sing little, like for fractions, whatever you do to the bottom, "You have to do to the top, bottom, bottom, top, top, top." I remember that, still to this day, singing. I play guitar, singing, and I do that in the psych unit, bringing guitar in, singing things, trying other, like there was, I think, we should get involved with the homeschool people sometimes and get some of their curriculum, they have one called Sing and Spell Read and Write. The singing part of it is what gets the kids to remember, it's the jingle. So we can try other things, I mean, why do we have to do the same thing we've been doing for 20 years? So, I don't know, my sister gave me this one piece of advice, when she said, "Do you know what insanity is? It's doing the same thing over, and not getting any results that have changed." So I just, I, I think we have a good, I, I heard that EC Glass was one of the top schools in the nation a few years ago, why can't it go back there? Why can't we? Did I answer your question?
Thank you very much. We're at 25 minutes, does anybody else have a question, or do you want, yeah, Councilman questions?
So, kind of going along with what I was asking folks yesterday, so, you know, things are aligned for the, for the results that we get, right? So the, so the system would be aligned for what we get, and the results in Lynchburg suggest that the systems need to be realigned, because we've had increasing achievement gaps, we've been unable to retain veteran teachers, and we've had a declining graduation rate, all, on all metrics, we're, we're not performing the way we should be. If that realignment were to be necessary, which, you know, some sort of it definitely is, and it included personnel changes that the school board needed to make, would you have the courage to replace leaders within the division if you felt like that was necessary to make sure that we begin performing the way we should for our students, families, and parents?
Yeah. It's never fun to fire anybody or terminate anybody, and it, on both parts, it's not nice, but sometimes you have to do hard things. We can do hard things. School boards should be always evaluating their, you know, teachers and their superintendents, deputy super, whatever they call them here, I guess deputy superintendents, and, you know, it should give somebody, though, this is the one thing I'll say, if they need to have a performance evaluation, and they need to have time to make corrective action. I know we do that in nursing, again, you know, when all the years I went, we always have that, we always have time to correct it, and so if they're, you know, if we're doing that, and still it's not happening, it's not working, then yeah, I think we need to, because we're accountable to the citizens too, you know, your taxpayer dollars at work, so we, we need to be honest and have integrity. And integrity is what it's all about to me, so if, if we're underperforming, we need to look at why, if we can get some, you know, help in there, tutoring or something, some kind of extra help. And like, again, thinking outside of the box, using mental health, because that could be part of the problem, I think it is. All these bullying campaigns and everything that they have in these schools don't seem don't seem to be working. And I think part of it, you know, we're not going to be able to fix the whole of society, but we can start somewhere. And I also believe in the power of prayer. So that's where I'm coming from. And one thing I want to say is, it's about motivation. That's my big key. Find out what motivates the student. There was something I was going to say here about the hand of the diligent, because I consider diligence one of my strong suits. The hand of the diligent should be made rich. So if you put your hand to the plow, you know, we can help them. And, and, you know, if the Bible, you know, I might need to bring it in, but I have to, because it's part of who I am. The proverbs especially, they're pretty, you know, they're pretty general. So every culture can kind of look at those. Correcting your son will save him from pitfalls and foolishness. And also it says, a child left to himself brings his mother to shame. And that one always bothered me. I'm like, why is it put on the mother? But that's what it says. The child left to himself brings his mother to shame. And we don't want that. I don't want any child or any mother to feel ashamed. I've talked to many mothers in many horrible circumstances. Some of them are trying the best they can. They just need a little help, you know, and maybe some encouragement. So that's pretty much all I have to say, unless you have something else.
Do you, do you think that we can continue on the current path that we're headed on with the current leadership on Lynchburg City Schools?
Um, no. I, I think we need to look at some things. And I do think that it's not an easy path. My father was a superintendent in three different school districts throughout his career. So I can speak to the fact that it was a very difficult challenge being a superintendent. And I met, I didn't really meet Dr. Edwards, but I went to the last school board meeting and I sat there for four hours and I was the only one there, but I waited and I just wanted to see what they were doing. I really liked the interaction with the school board. There was some bantering back and forth about some of the changes with the categorical spending. They were trying to find ways to, you know, save money. And, but I do think if things aren't changing, you do need to make those hard decisions. And I would, you know, I've done hard things. We can do hard things.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We, we are at nine.
Thank all of you for having me. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, the next is Dr. Kim Sinhal will be joining us virtually, followed by Beth White.
Okay. Hello, Dr. Sinhal.
Hello. Thank you for accommodating me. I'm in Pennsylvania, attending the annual conference of Unitarian Universalists. So I appreciate this accommodation. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Dr. Wilder's not here, so Councilwoman Dolan is going to ask his questions.
Good afternoon, Dr. Sinhal. This is a question from Sterling Wilder, Councilmember Wilder. LCS has over 15-plus programs that address learning loss, achievement gap, credit recovery, acceleration and more. Which program are you familiar with that has the most impact? And what other program would you like to see to improve test scores in Lynchburg?
Well, it, it, they all have different objectives and are geared toward different needs, different school levels, different outcomes. I will be honest and say that I would like to see better stating of, of what the desired learning outcomes are, what are criteria for success. How do we know that it's succeeding? And more data-driven analysis of that. But when you're trying to reach every child by name and need, you're going to need multiple different programs to address the variety of needs.
Thank you. From Dr. Wilder.
Councilwoman Dolan.
Thank you. Dr. Sinhal, thank you again for your willingness to serve another three years on the LCS school board. You bring a unique set of skills to the board with your expertise in data management and educational effectiveness and assessment on learning outcomes. What policies should be put in place to address and improve academic outcomes? And what are the obstacles to doing that?
Well, one of the things I consistently include in my, so annually, the school board evaluates a superintendent. And one area where I've been a strong advocate and somewhat critical, but encouraging is to, again, set up an assessment regime. And, and honestly, I'm modeling it from what higher education is required to do for accreditation, where you look at a given program, an academic major, a CTE program, any one of these credit recovery or acceleration or remediation programs. What are the desired student outcomes? How are you measuring whether or not they are achieved? And, and how do you, what is your criteria for success? Is it a 75% pass rate? Is it 90% pass rate or completion rate or recovery rate? It depends on what the programs are. But I, I have often stayed, because I know how, how bad higher education is at, at doing this. And once you get into it, it's not that hard just to have to be very clear and measured. Now, a lot of times, people who teach or administrate aren't trained in assessment. They're trained in assessing students, but not in assessing programs. It's a very different thing. Here you're using student information to evaluate how well the institution is performing. So it's a little switching it around. And I've worked hard to try to get, encourage that. And I think we're getting there, not fast enough. But finally, we have a data analyst in the administration who I think will, is already doing profound things to allow us to look at data, spot patterns, find opportunities, look where deficits are, look where outcomes aren't occurring the way they are. And you need that information. So I, I, I feel like my influence on the school board led to the opening of that position. I know you have an, the council has an aversion to administrators, but in this case, this is a necessary one. If you're going to track performance, you need to have data-driven information. LCS is a very data-rich environment. We know students who have housing insecurity that move around. We know students' family makeup. We know their performance. We know what schools they've been to. We know their grades. We know their behavior. Everything is there. It just needs the right statistician analyst to pull that together and model it and then look at what are those combination of factors that contribute to success, but also contribute to behavior problems and problems of falling behind.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead. Councilwoman Missions?
Hello, Dr. Sinhal. Thank you for your service to the school board. The first question I'm going to ask you is about discipline. We've had a lot of situations involved in Lynchburg City Schools with some really, you know, aggressive behaviors from students, violence towards other students, teachers and so forth. And it's really, I believe is a big part of the reason we're having retention issues with teachers, because I've talked to many teachers. It's not just about the pay. It's also about the behavior issues in these schools. Do you support strict punishment for behavior in schools?
I do. You know, we see the most egregious cases because anybody who's referred for 364-day suspension automatically gets an appeal before the school board. So we see those students. We see the reports of what they do, the way they speak to teachers, the way they behave, the way they fight. It's unacceptable. Some of that starts with the parents. You have to, the parents have to tell their children, it's your teacher, whether you like your teacher, whether you think your teacher's an idiot, whether your teachers are real pain. They're your teacher. So you have to respect them. You know, I may take issue with you, Councilwoman Missions, for some of the stance you take, but I respect you because of your position on the council. And I will always treat you with that respect. I think students need to learn that. We've kind of lost that culturally. It, it's not just here in Lynchburg. But I do believe that, that, I, I think maybe we need to come in harder earlier with those things. Now, it, it's hard to know how to handle those. I think some of the measures that we're taking moving forward, now that we've gotten this six, $6 million grant to do some restorative practices and preventative practices, I think will help. I think early interventions will help. We certainly need larger capacity for alternative education for those students who can't behave in the schools and are too much of a disruption, have harmed teachers. I've seen assistant principals show up with a black eye. That's not acceptable. Fights. I've never seen fights like I've seen on the videos. So I, I'm with you, Councilwoman Missions. I'm, I'm, I'm very conservative when it comes to child behavior. I have high expectations of my own children. I would never accept them speaking to teachers the way I, I hear. Some of things are words I've never even heard before. So I'm with you. I'm hopeful that as part of the facility study, if we have decommissioned buildings, for example, that are still city-owned, that maybe we can open up some capacity for alternative education. Right now, you know, Fort Hill is on shift. We don't have full-day education for students who don't behave. And it's not in a real school setting where they can at least work off some anger issues with a recess, basketball, what have you. Half-day education or remote education for these students is not enough. Okay? So I would like to see school board work with city council, with the resources available to see how we can expand that, particularly for middle school. It used to be only high school students were really the egregious discipline problems, but it's now happening in the middle school. And I think middle school is the key area where we need to capture students, keep them engaged. They, they, they begin to disengage with their education at that point, because they're becoming people who make their own decisions and think they know things. But I'm with you. I would, I would define the stricter punishments for disturbing behavior.
And you, you had mentioned the school board's appeals for discipline, for suspensions and things like that. Forgive me for being ignorant to this, but are, are you part of that? Is it a committee or is it the entire board that it goes to?
It's a subcommittee. So we rotate three people at a time. So about twice a week, but sometimes we've had to double up. We had so many more discipline cases this year than any other year. Some of that is an unintended result of the decriminalization of marijuana. So we're picking up kids who are in possession of marijuana, because I, I guess because it's legal, their parents are less careful with it in the home, because we didn't have these before. My first few years on, on school board, we didn't have drug offenses. Now we have them more frequently. And I see that as an unintended negative consequence of the decriminalization of marijuana, which in and of itself, I think was a good thing. But that said, but yeah, you know, when you see some of these cases, they have usually a lot of referrals. So they, they, I, I think that goes on too long and, and some of them have in-school suspension. It's almost as if their discipline doesn't have any effect. You know, I, I, I really think in some cases with some children, it may be an unsolvable problem, and therefore we need capacity for alternative education. Or, and I mentioned this with Mr. Helgeson a year or so ago at the beginning of the facilities, that if there were decommissioned building, like if we closed a school, but the building still exists, that perhaps we could have some kind of laboratory school for, and this gets a little tricky, because you don't want to isolate students, but you've got to find a way to, to resocialize them into being respectful people. Because if you want to be treated with, and this is what I tell students in these hearings, if you want teachers to treat you with respect, you have to be respectful to them. And it's never ever okay to speak to any person, let alone a teacher, in the way the situation shows that they did. So there we do have a need for increased capacity for alternative education.
And I guess, the real question that I have with that is, you know, with, with that being said, and, and you actually being there, I'm hearing a lot that the principals are making these recommendations for more serious, more strict punishments, like 364-day suspensions and so forth, that are getting completely overturned by the appeal process through the school board. So I'm just kind of, help me understand if we're backing up strict punishment, but then the school board is overturning it. I just don't, I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
We have had more, yes and no. We have had more latitude this year in the length of, the length of the suspension, but oftentimes the suspensions will still go through. And again, for the most egregious offenses, it is at least a half a year suspension. Sometimes it depends on if, so if we're in the middle of a, of a student's eighth grade year, we feel it might be better for the student if they can start ninth grade in a new school, high school, for example, fresh on day one, as opposed to going in at the end of the year on suspension. But again, it depends on the nature of the offense. Fighting, weapons, those kinds of things definitely get the full year. But we have had more latitude. So with some of the drug offenses, we've been a little bit softer with those. Some of them, like with really young kids, bringing a, a paring knife to school to show off. We've been, and these are like fourth graders. I mean, they really don't know. We've been a little bit more lenient in those cases. But for a lot, we mostly uphold those. And again, we have a capacity problem. There's not enough room at Fort Hill for the problems that we have.
I'm going to pass, I'm going to pass you off to Councilman Taylor.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm okay. I'm a little out of sorts being traveling and I don't like to do things remotely. So I wish I could be there in person. But again, I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I have one question. Do you think schools ought to have parents of disciplining children in court?
In court?
Yes. Is, do you think the school system, when a child's disciplined at home, go to school, tell the teacher that he's been disciplined by his parents, do you think the school system should step in and haul that parent into court?
Well, I think teachers are required reporters if they suspect some kind of physical abuse is going on. So there is a requirement there to make a CPS report, but then, then that goes in the hands of Child Protective Services and that process is in their hands. They will investigate and determine whether or not there's an issue. Is that, am I answering you? Am I, what you're?
Do you think that parents ought to be charged with a crime for disciplining their children?
If they're abusive in that discipline, absolutely.
Thank you.
Vice President Fraldy?
Dr. Sinhal, thank you for your service thus far and continued desire to serve on the school board. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to maybe listen yesterday to the interviews, but I've been, I've been asking a very similar question to folks. If you've heard that question, it'd be helpful to know. That way we can continue on if not.
Yeah. So I agree with you. Our graduation rate is too low. One thing I would caution you on your stats, I think you're quoting the, the poverty rates of the cities themselves or the locales themselves, correct?
Just like I would be citing the city itself, yes.
Right. I think another measure tied to that is the concentration of poverty within the school population. As you know, LCS school population is very different from the city's population. Now, I'm just going to say that as just a, as a data point for a more accurate comparison. I don't want to blame everything on poverty. I'm not going to do that. Because I think although poverty does have, present significant challenges, and we know that it's toxic to the brain, so it can affect brain function, I still think that with the right parental involvement and school resources, students can graduate. And so I find that our graduation rate should be higher, can be higher and must be higher. I have a thought on that. I think where we begin to lose students' interest is in the middle school. I think we don't do as good a job as we need to, to make education more relevant. I think some of that's a byproduct of the SOLs. You talk about the system that we're in. SOLs are part of that system. Okay? I agree there needs to be accountability. We need to have some way to measure school performance and how well we're doing. I'm not so sure the SOL in and of itself should, should be that, because as you and I even discussed, diverse learners and neurodiversity, I wouldn't do well on a SOL test, even if I took it now. I, I, I don't test well. It's just the way my brain is. But But nowadays, we're teaching, we're kind of in a position where we have to teach to the test, what's on the test. And I know from college, we get freshmen who come in and say, well, they're not telling me what's on the test. They're not telling me what I need to know for the test. Not realizing, you just need to know it all. So there's a conditioning that's happening there. And it limits teachers' ability to do experiential learning, where it's hands-on and you can do things. Group learning, collaborative projects, more involvement with outside experts, things like that. We have to teach what's going to be on the SOL so we can improve SOL scores. It's, I find it very frustrating and very limiting. I will tell you that one of the plans in place that will require city council involvement and funding is the expansion of lab schools to create middle school hubs for career tech education. Do you know that our career tech students have 100% graduation rate? And we have opportunities to expand career tech into the middle schools where I think then it can make them see there's a future for them. There's things they can do. They see immediate outcome. If you're cooking, you need to know fractions and math and timing and this and that chemistry. All those things can be part of those kind of courses, which we don't really have to the full extent that we could. I think we could save a lot of students from falling behind if we had more relevant education. That's going to take cooperation on the part of city council and the city schools to look at workforce development. How can we train these students to be the workers the city of Lynchburg wants, Region 2000 wants, for our manufacturing and industry that we have here? And so I'm excited about that opportunity as we move forward. I think that, and I've encouraged, for example, Education Foundation does a lot to honor student achievement. And it's really good. It creates incentives, but it's mostly biased towards college-bound students, which is unfair to students who are in career tech because those require learning, study, discipline, grit, practice, and those fields of study should be honored similarly. So I've really encouraged Ed Foundation to find some way to do that and elevate those programs on the same footing as students who are going to go to, say, Carnegie Mellon or William &amp; Mary and things like that.
Dr. Senha, forgive me, we're realizing a bit of a technical issue or a situation where I think one microphone has to be muted while you speak and then our microphone gets muted while, or vice versa. And so with that, I was trying to interject and say, hey, that's great. Can I ask you a slightly different twist on that? So I apologize for the back and forth, but if you don't mind, that's all very well and good and I appreciate it greatly. But with all that context, I think even with the tech issues and us comically trying to butt in and be like, stop. Dr. Senha, with immense respect for the time you've given on this board in the last six years, why should I reappoint you, support your reappointment, vote for your reappointment, if over the last six years the graduation rate has continued to decline?
Well, all I can say is I've tried to stress with the schools that accountability matters. We have to have measurements that matter. We have to be able to report to you as a funding source that we get value for your dollar, that we have outcomes. And we're getting there, not fast enough. COVID years really set us back, but I think we're on track to do that. Give me a minute to interject if you want.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. If I may, I think we're just going, just a few more moments to my colleagues. You said an interesting line that perplexed me that council has an aversion to administrators. I'd appreciate your, what do you mean by that? That was in response to Councilmember Dolan. And then furthermore, you did say something that caught my attention. That if you want dignity and respect, you should treat folks the same. And I would hold to that and we all fail at that in our own various ways at various times. And yet you were speaking to some level of respect for Councilmember Missions for the position he holds. And so my next question would be, how does that apply to the position of a parent? How does that respect apply to the position of a parent when, how can you say you respect the positions that folks hold? And in many respects, the role of a parent is one of the most honorable any of us could ever hold. When you call parents you disagree with an infestation?
No, that's a mischaracterization of what happened. That was a situation where a group of parents felt they were entitled, entitled to disobey the health ordinance that we, it was at the height of COVID. We closed our galley for audience participation because we had to spread out. I think council made the same move. You didn't have the public in your council chambers during the most severe time of COVID. These were families who decided, a group of families, just them, not all parents, do not overgeneralize, who stormed in, insisted it was their right, helped themselves to a storage area to get chairs that had been removed because we didn't have people in, and thought it was their right and entitlement to be there. And if you look at what the definition of infestation is, it is, you know, an invasion, an unwanted invasion.
Senha, I guess I would ask this. If Councilmember Missions does things that you disagree with and don't approve of, but his position is one of respect and authority, and yet these parents are acting on behalf of their children, which is a place of respect and authority, why do they get your, why do they get the level of animosity?
They thought that the rules did not apply to them. It had nothing to do with their children. It was a work session. There wasn't even time for public comments. All they could do is sit there silently. And we're required to have public meetings. We do that. We were doing it over YouTube, over LCS channel. They had every opportunity to watch what was happening in our meeting. They did not have a right to disrupt our meeting by demanding that they be there. Now, in the end, we let them be there. But was I upset about what they did? Yes. And I called it an infestation because it was harassing and troublesome invasion that they had no business doing. And I think it was a poor example of parenting. Would you want your children to just disobey a rule that you think you don't have to follow it? That's what they did.
Do you stand by it and would you say it again?
I would say it again. They misbehaved. You want good behavior from kids? You have to have good behavior from parents. Parents did not respect our rules that applied to everybody else. Everybody else followed them, but they felt that they did not have to. It was a stunt. It was performance. That's all it was, for show. And that's how I reacted and I stand by it. And every time it's brought up, they never mention what they did to provoke it. They inferred that I called them vermin, like rats or ants or roaches. Well, that is commonly associated with infestation. And if they took that away from it, that's how they see themselves. The infestation was about their act of coming in, invading our chamber when they weren't allowed to be there, demanding that they be there simply because they believed they were entitled to be there.
Thank you for your interest in your service.
Hi, Dr. Senha. To keep us on time, I wasn't aware that Councilwoman Missions was asking Councilwoman Helgeson's question. So I'm going to give the floor back to Councilwoman Missions and just let him finish with his question, okay? Thank you.
And this is going to be relatively quick. We had a really bright young man who applied to be on the school board. And then he was disqualified because he works at Lynchburg City Schools. And you just talked about the rules applying to one but not applying to the other. It's my understanding that you applied for a position with Lynchburg City Schools while you were on the school board. Is that correct? And why is that not a conflict of interest for you to apply for a position that would be selected by the superintendent that works for you?
Well, I did apply for a position. And, you know, human resource information is supposed to be confidential. So I'd really like to know how you found out about that because that's a serious problem. Lynchburg City Schools will have problems.
I would offer that the more serious problem would be that you're interested in making sure that that didn't get out and making, you know, and hiding that. Because we are not allowed to do that on city council. Are you aware of that? That city council, we are not allowed to apply for employment with the city for 12 months until after we separate from city council? A Lynchburg City School employee is not allowed to apply for the school board if they're currently a Lynchburg City School employee. However, you thought it was okay after you just sat here and explained that these rules, that these parents should follow these rules and not advocate for their children and not view the public process. But it's okay for you to, in reverse, pretty much do the same thing by applying for a position with Lynchburg City Schools while you're sitting on the school board. I just, I'm not concerned about how it got out. What I'm concerned about is how do you see that as being a conflict of interest or not?
Okay, I was very sensitive to that and I realize how it could have made things uncomfortable. What you don't know is that prior to that, I discussed it with the chair of the school board, mentioned that I, because the position had gone vacant for six months. It sat there for six months without a viable candidate. And I was concerned that it was such a crucial position, important, especially as we run out of CARES money and we need to demonstrate usefulness of how we did that and we were going to run off this, whatever. So I applied for it. But before doing that, I discussed it with the chair of the board. Now, there's no rule like you have in city council that I'm aware of that applies to school board. So I don't think I have violated any rule in that sense. I made it clear to the school board chair that if I was offered the job, I would resign from the school board. I also made it clear that if I didn't get the job, which I didn't, I would bear no grudge and I would help that person in that position no matter what. And that's exactly what has happened. So I'm sure, I'm sure the hiring committee felt obligated to interview me and that's fine. But in the end, I didn't get the job. I didn't compete well for it. And Chuck Yarborough is in that position and he's done a phenomenal job and I'm his biggest cheerleader.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. I'll just take, we will add an additional minute to Ms. White. But I was just going to ask one question about teacher retention. We've talked a lot about the turnover and the high rate of teachers leaving. And one of the things that has been brought up, associated with the reason, was behavioral issues, the schools and teachers being frustrated with how the children are behaving. But what do you think another reason is? And what do you think can be done about that? If you had any suggestions or ideas and thoughts on that?
Well, I think public education has just been pummeled, especially during the COVID era. But, you know, teachers are accused of being groomers. They're accused of being leftist indoctrinators. I mean, there's all kinds of smears aimed at public education. And why would you go into public education? Now we have gun violence and it's gotten worse. Why would you want to be a teacher that has to undergo lockdowns? When I was a kid, I think the worst thing a teacher had to worry about is a kid throwing up in class. It's very different these days. Kids fight. Teachers get in the way. They get hurt. I wouldn't tolerate that either. The demands on them are huge. They have to meet the SOL requirements. They're supposed to tailor their lessons to every student by need in the classroom. That's hard to do when you have 20, 30 kids in a classroom. They're just underappreciated. I mean, we had an instance where we had a policy of changing sexually explicit material that was weaponized and framed as accusing Lynchburg City Schools of already having this content in here. As if, you know, these aren't our people, Lynchburg people, who go to Lynchburg churches and have been educated in Lynchburg schools and have gone to Liberty University, for example. Do you think they're choosing sexually explicit material to share in the classes? But it was spoken about as if that's already happening and needed to be weeded out. So when you have talk of the schools like that, always negative, why would you want to stay? I wouldn't. There's no way I would go into teaching.
Well, thank you so much for your, oh, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, but.
I'm over my time, so I appreciate it.
I appreciate you zooming in from long distance and appreciate your time today. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, up next is Beth White in District 2, followed by recess at 2:30.
Okay, so we went 3348 for Dr. Senha, so we will give you the same opportunity, Mrs. White. He is coming, so.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I was willing to wait for you, sir.
Okay, so again, Dr. Wilder is out, so Councilwoman Dolan will be asking questions for him.
Hello, Dr. Dolan.
Good afternoon.
She actually is, she's honorary doctor, so.
Yeah, I am honorary doctor.
I am a couple of months away.
Pardon?
I am a couple of months away.
LCS has over 15-plus programs that address learning loss, achievement gap, credit recovery, acceleration, and more. Which program are you familiar with that has the most impact? And what other program would you like to see to improve test scores in Lynchburg?
That's actually a really good question. And just like the first person that spoke today said, it's really hard when you go on the Lynchburg City Schools website to find exactly those programs. There's nothing that says, hey, I'm an education program, here I am, here's what I do. I did find two, one of which is actually going to speak to what the vice mayor has been asking. The first one is the Education Foundation. And it provides grant money to help teachers find new and creative ways to teach in the classroom. You know, I worked with youth groups for 32 years. And a lot of my kids, when they found out that I teach at the collegiate level, history and government, their first thing out of the mouth was, I hate history. My answer to them is, you hate history because you didn't have me as a history teacher to make learning fun. If you are going to sit there and just be lectured at all day, that is no, that's not fun. I detested science when I was in eighth grade, but I had a teacher who made this huge game out of geology. And I still remember, and it's been several decades since I was in eighth grade, but he made it fun. The other is the Beacon of Hope. And it helps high school students with a pathway to life after school. It helps them find a way to get into college or even get into the trade school. Now, the second half of that question was, what would I like to see schools implement to improve test scores? Our test scores are bad. This is taken from the Virginia Department of Education Quality Scores. Yeah, those packets stick. Our English score, the Virginia requirement is 75. Our English score is 81, so we're doing pretty good with that. Our science score, Virginia requirement is 72. We're at 51. Our math score, the Virginia requirement is 70. We're at 83, and that's great. One thing I would like to see is some more of the STEM centers. Dr. Wilder arranged for me to take a tour of the STEM. Dr. Wilder arranged for me to take a tour of the STEM center over there on Florida Avenue. I wish they had something like that when I was in school because that's hands-on learning and encourages students. It's free and it shows an interest in math, in science, and things like that, subjects I was absolutely horrible in in school. We have the Amazement Square, and that's great. It's hands-on learning, but it's very expensive to take just a couple of kids to go see. If we had more programs like the STEM center that were, that is cost-effective and it allows kids hands-on learning, we could see improvements in the scores that we're lacking.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Okay. Put on my other pattern. Welcome. So you expressed concerns about the dropout rate and high absenteeism in your application of LCS students. As a school board member, what policies could you or would you support that could affect change in these two areas? And what do you see as a reason for high absenteeism?
Okay. Great questions. I found in doing that same study that the average chronic absenteeism is defined as students in the total population who are missing 10% or more of school. That's 18 days out of standard 180-day school year. How are students supposed to learn if they're not in school? We also have to look at, why are students missing so much school? Is it because the parents are having to work so many extra hours and there's no one home to make sure the student gets on the school bus to get to school on time? Is it because they're sick? Is it because the parents just don't? I, I don't want to say the parents don't care. But is it because, for whatever reason, the students are not showing up to school? Is it because they're, they're being bullied? I don't know. But we need to talk to those students and actually find out, why are you missing so much school? Talk to the parents. Do you know, why is little Johnny or little Susie missing so much school? Is there a problem? Maybe see if we can get to the root of that problem. You also asked about the dropout rate. The dropout rate at EC Glass High School was 7.35%. The dropout rate at Heritage, which is not in District Two, but it's still a city school, is almost 10%. That's bad. I'm actually doing my doctoral dissertation to find out at the collegiate level, why are we having so many in college among military students dropping out or withdrawing from classes? I'll let you know how that turns out. The graduation rate, as the vice mayor has spoken, EC Glass graduation rate is 86.3%. At Heritage, it's 81.4%. The Virginia average is 89%. Why are we having, why is it so low? Why are students not staying in school? Why are they not getting that diploma? One thing I would like to see is, and I know we can't put it all on the teachers. Teachers, we're asking teachers to be almost babysitters for students across the board. We can't keep asking our teachers to perform miracles. They're not the parents. They are the teachers. Their job is to educate. Perhaps we need to ask the principals. Or perhaps, I understand the position in schools is behavioral specialist. When I was in school, there were guidance counselors. Somebody needs to speak to these parents or speak to these students and find out what's going on. In college, they have benchmarks as to if a student starts making below-average grades. I, as a college professor, have to report that to the administration, who then talks to the students to find out what's going on. Your grades are slipping. You know, catch them before they get into that level where they start dropping out. If we can fix the problem before it becomes a true problem, maybe we can improve some of these scores.
So you would have to institute some policies that could be proactive in some fashion?
Yes. In a roundabout way, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Hugson?
Well, good afternoon.
Hello, Councilman.
Reading your, your application and just what you stated, obviously, there's lots of problems with our graduation rate, with our high dropout rate, with the test scores, lots of things. Very bad. Do you think we can get improvement with the same leadership that we've had?
I always tell my students, and I teach collegiate level history and government, if you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always got. In other words, if we keep applying the same solutions to the same problems, we're going to continue to have the same problems.
So with those same solutions, sometimes, you know, on the school board, the school board either proposes or adopts solutions that are presented by the, the chief of the schools, which is the superintendent and the leadership. Do you think there should be a change?
If we are continuing to have the same problems, absolutely. The Harry Truman hat sign on his desk when he was president says, the buck stops here. And I firmly believe that when you're in leadership, you have to set the example. And if you're not getting the job done, then there needs to be a change.
And lots of times I've seen over my almost 20 years that there's always a new excuse. There's always a new reason, because of poverty or because of, oh, you didn't have breakfast or didn't have lunch or socioeconomics are really low, two parents are working or single parents or, well, because of then COVID. I mean, it was just, it was thing after thing that it's almost self-inflicted. And then they blame the circumstances that they created. Are you able to say, hey, I'm tired of listening to these excuses? And, and we've got a clean, clean house if we really do care about our children learning, graduating?
Yes.
Do you think you have the backbone to say enough, even if you're the only person?
Absolutely. And I will give you a very good example of that. I actually interviewed for a spot on the school board back in 2019. And I was looking at my notes from back then and found that we had the same problems. Our, our, we had a lack of accredited schools. And instead of raising the bar like I had hoped we would do, we lowered the bar. That's inexcusable. We're setting our students up for failure instead of setting high standards and say, okay, here's the bar. You need to meet that bar if you want to succeed in life. And instead of keeping it up here, we brought it down here and say, here's the easy way out. We can't have that. If we want our students to achieve success and graduate like they're supposed to and succeed in life, we need to make some changes.
So what do you think about discipline? You know, there's lots of problems I've heard from teachers, but what kind of policies regarding discipline?
I do not tolerate a lack of respect to teachers. I go to Sunday School with a number of teachers who work in Campbell County. I'm assuming it's going to be the same for Lynchburg City. And every single one of these teachers have told me, no matter how much they try to discipline the students in the classroom, they are not allowed to tell the students no. They turn the students out of the classroom. They send them to the principal's office, and then the principal chews them out for doing so because they have no support from the administration. Teachers are quitting in droves. They can't find bus drivers. I've got a friend who drives a school bus for Campbell County. She said bus drivers are not, that's why we have such a bus driver shortage. It's not so much the pay, it's the lack of discipline on the bus. I used to ride a bus back and forth to school when I went to Russburg High School. The bus driver had absolutely no problem pulling that bus over and saying, y'all settle down or we're going back to the school. We did once, and that only took one time. And the principal came out there and chewed everybody out for misbehaving, even those of us who were not misbehaving. We've got to get back to the fact that, yes, kids are being unruly. Somebody told me once that it's not that they're bad kids, they're good kids, but they are behaving badly. Okay? So why are they behaving badly? Is it because they're having a rough time at home? Is it because they're in a gang and the gang is promoting that? I actually reached out to Mr. Friedman and asked this question. If students assault teachers, and I'm very big on, that does not happen. That should not ever happen in a school. But if, if a student assaults a teacher, can the parent be held responsible? The student's under the age of 18, the parent's supposed to be responsible for them. And according to Virginia Code, no. If a parent does not know that the student has assaulted a teacher, the parent is not responsible. However, if the parent encourages the teacher, then yes, the parent needs to be held responsible.
So in that case, would that be a 365 suspension, automatic? No ifs, ands, or buts?
If they physically assaulted the teacher, I would like to know what the maximum penalty is allowed by the state.
I mean, they can kick, you can kick them out of school. 365 suspension. We used to have that policy and previous superintendent said, oh, that's too tough because it's racist.
No. If the 365 policy is what is required, then absolutely. Allow them to go to alternative education so that they're not completely kicked out of school, but they need, they, they should not be a student in that school.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Higginson?
Hello, Councilman.
Hello. Thank you for being here and thank you for your willingness to step up and serve. For once, I'm at a loss because Councilman Hugson actually got what I was looking for. So let's go a different direction. Recently, we've seen a, across the nation, a rash of horrific injuries to girls and women in sports because they are being forced to compete in athletics with biological males. And I did a little research after asking this to Mr. Brennan yesterday. There are actually model policies on the privacy, dignity, and respect for all students that have been issued by the governor and VDOE that I, to my understanding, have not been adopted by Lynchburg City Schools. So the first part of the question is, have you seen those, that model policy? Is that something you'd be interested in adopting? And the second part is, what are we going to do to protect girls in our schools to make sure that they don't have to compete against biological boys in sports and not be exposed to biological boys in restrooms or locker rooms?
I was so hoping, honestly, that you would ask me that question. I really was. I am a former, you can't tell it now, but I was a former student athlete in, in sports. And I am very much a proponent of protecting girls, biological girls, in girls' sports. I, I do not think biological males should participate for more than just the physical reason. Guys are physically stronger than girls. There was a situation the other day in a high school where a biological male was playing in a female volleyball game at a school. And he spiked the volleyball in the girl's face so hard, it knocked her out. That should not happen. Guys do not belong in girls' restrooms. And if it cost me a spot on the school board, I will say it. Guys do not belong in female restrooms. That's it. When I was in fourth grade, I had to go. I really had to go. And I busted in through the guys, the boys' bathroom. And you should have seen the boys running for cover. They didn't think I belonged in the girls', in the boys' locker room any more than I think they belong in the girls' restroom. This was fourth grade, a very long time ago. But no, I'm a very big proponent of protecting girls' sports because I am a former female student athlete. I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
You answered them both. I think, did, did you talk about the policy?
I, I am not familiar with the governor's policy. I would very much like to see it. And yes, if it protects girls and girls' sports, then yes, we need to adopt it. We need to protect all of our students.
Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Ms. White.
Hello, Councilman.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Do you think all of our children are victims?
Do I think all of our children are victims?
Victims. That's, that's being taught. Victim Johnny, victim Susie, just victims. They go to school, you, you, you don't have enough to eat, you don't have enough sleep, your parents doing this and that, so the child become a victim. Do you believe that?
No, no, I don't believe all of our students are victims. You are the product of your circumstance sometimes. Do I think, that to me is the same as saying that little Japanese-American babies are to blame for Pearl Harbor. They're not a victim. No. We are in an entitlement generation. And that needs to stop.
Yes.
Bottom line, it needs to stop. Did I answer your questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Brolin?
Hi.
Hello.
Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, too. I presumed you knew my question, so I figured I'd just let you have at it and share what you think.
Okay. You were asking about the graduation. One thing that I think we should do as far as bringing, improving the graduation rate, we need to find out why are students dropping out? Why are students just being passed along? I understand that there is a policy, and I don't know if it's Lynchburg City Schools' policy or if it's a Virginia Department of Education, but we're not allowed to retain students. We can't hold students back. If they don't do good in their grade, they're not allowed, they're, we're not allowed to keep them back in the grade. We have to ask the parents' permission. I have trouble with that. I had one student who, in my, in my youth group, who just did not do well in school. And she should have been held back, but she was just passed right on, along. The same thing happened to my brother when he was little. And this was, you know, 80s and 90s. They just passed him on along. He hated school, but he was never made to stay back and just do better. One thing that I would like to see to improve scores and improve those graduation rates, when I was in fifth grade, we had a program where as fifth graders, we were allowed to go down and mentor the first graders, help them with their schoolwork if they didn't understand. Institute that in the schools, even at the elementary school level. Help them to go back and mentor those little kids. One, it gives the students a chance to help others. Two, it teaches these students to give back to others. And it teaches them mentorship and it teaches, it teaches them the ability to just to give back and the importance of giving back to others that maybe are not as smart as you. One thing, too, I would like to see is us bring back junior achievement. I know Sterling Wilder is, Dr. Wilder isn't here. You may remember this. You've been in Lynchburg forever. Junior Achievement, they had that when I was in high school. It was a partnership, if you're not familiar with it, with local businesses who went, who met up with local high school students. And it taught them a business. It taught them trade. It taught them how businesses ran. It taught them how to market and manufacture products that they then went out and sold. I still have stuff that I made from Junior Achievement in the late 80s. Another thing that I would like to see is to teach these students in school, personal finance, how to write out a budget, how to plan a budget, how to effectively go to the grocery store and not just find stuff that you can pop in the microwave, how to balance a checkbook, how to just live as an adult. I can't tell you how many of my students that I had in youth as even seniors had no idea how to write a check, had no idea how to balance a checkbook, had no idea what a budget was. And that's something that we need to teach. We're not, you can give these students everything they need as far as math, science, and, you know, technology and all that, but what are we doing for them when they get out of school? How are we helping them succeed at life? We're not giving them any skills. We took away home ec so they don't know how to cook. You know, we're not, we're not giving them the tools that they need to succeed. We're getting them out of the classroom, okay, done, see you, bye. But we're setting them up for failure. If we want this city to succeed, we need our schools to succeed. They're not succeeding with an. They're not succeeding with an 82% graduation rate.
And I would say it's mostly because we're trying to do too much or everything and, and not focus on what we should be focusing on, which is why I've been phrasing this question to every applicant, is to see how you would filter the focus of graduation. And then everything else should fall into place.
Right.
And if it doesn't help me get there, then I'm going to be diverting my resources. But thank you.
Yes.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good, ma'am. How are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Good.
So I've learned a lot from the questions that have been asked the last couple of days, or yesterday and today, and, and all of the answers. So I'm intrigued because while I do not think that our students are victims by any means, I think you hit the nail on the head is they also don't choose the circumstances to which they're born, right?
Right.
So we, we've talked a lot about who's to blame right now as to why our children aren't learning. Why are our students doing so poorly on these tests? Thank you for bringing this, by the way. Is it the students' fault? Is it the parents' fault? Is it the teachers' fault? Is it school board? Is it superintendent?
Sure.
You know, up the chain, down the chain. Where, who's to blame in the chain? Is a little bit of everybody? You know, what are your thoughts on why we're here? You, you mentioned we used to have some of the highest rated schools, high schools in the country. We're not there anymore. We're seeing the gaps. We can blame a lot on COVID, obviously. I don't know how much you've, how much time you've had to talk to the principals of our schools, go individually to the schools, kind of see the dynamics of each individual school because we do have very individual schools
Yes.
with individual issues and, and very individual students.
Right.
So what are your thoughts on that? Why do you think, can you kind of identify what your thoughts are on why we're seeing these scores the way they, they are right now?
Sure.
And kind of why, you know, who do you think is to blame in all of this?
Sure. Great question. First, I have not been inside a Lynchburg City School since 1997, 1998, when I was actually a lunch lady and worked for the nutrition program. I really have had, one, no reason. I don't have any children to attend. I don't have any children, period. So I've got no reason to go into a Lynchburg City School. Secondly, I have tried reaching out to the superintendent by email twice. I've, in over a year, I've never gotten a response in any emails. The only interaction I have with teachers, as I stated earlier, are those that I go to Sunday School with, that are friends with, who work in Campbell County. So there's my experience with going into the city schools. To answer your question, it's actually a really good question because if you ask the parents, they'll say, oh, it's the teachers' fault. The teachers, when I first started, and I'm, full disclosure, I'm finishing my doctorate in education. Okay? When I started that particular program, one thing we learned is you only have 180 days to get through class. In all that time, they've got required fire drills. They have school assemblies. They have missed days. We didn't have any snow days this year, but you have snow days. You have just all kinds of reasons. You keep, you got to take field trips, get students out of class. Teachers only have so much time to teach on any given subject. Then you add in the disruptive students. Everybody is focused on the disruptive students. And yes, they have rights. But who's protecting the rights of the students who want to be in school? Who want to learn? Who's looking out for them? The teachers having to be so focused on the students who don't want to be there for whatever reason. Nobody's looking out for the students over here who just want to be there, who want to learn, who are not the bad apples. But you know what? We see the students over here that are creating the problems. They're getting all the attention. So meanwhile, you've got the good students are saying, hey, you know what? If little Johnny acts up and, and gets, you know, throws things at the teacher, he gets the teacher's love and attention. I'm not doing anything. Well, I want some of that attention, too. So you know what? I'm going to start acting up and I'm going to start being bad. I would like to see more teachers, maybe we can get some student teachers or even just some mentors to come from the different colleges, not just Liberty, but we've got five different colleges in this town and around this area. Let's get some more student or education students in the classrooms to help the teachers. Not necessarily as substitutes, but as mentors to help these students. If you ask the teachers, they're going to say, well, it's not my fault. I'm having to play babysitter. If you ask the principals, they're going to put it back on the teachers. If you ask the superintendent, I don't know who the superintendent's going to blame, but again, the ultimate thing is the buck has to stop with the leadership. And so I'm trying to fi- find the best way to answer your question, but I think that it's everybody's responsibility. The, the parents expect the teachers to be the babysitters. They're not taking parental involvement. And that's not all parents. That's some parents. But you're not having, parents get involved with teachers. You know, they're not, they're not showing up at parent-teacher conferences for whatever reason. Perhaps it's because they don't have time, because they work all day and well into the night, and they just don't have time to make sure little Johnny and little Susie are getting the homework done. I don't know. I haven't been in that situation. I haven't had the opportunity to talk to the teachers, to say, tell me your thoughts. What's going on? All we hear are, you know, I had a chair thrown at me today or I had to defend one student from getting, you know, from fighting with another student. In your statistics, in your packet that I've given you, it's a listing of the calls from Lynchburg Police Department to just the schools in District Two. Did you know that Sandusky Middle School had last year, between assaults and fights in progress, 64 calls? Just in the 21, 22 school year olds, 64 calls for either assaults or fights in progress where police had to respond. E.C. Glass had 23. That's a problem. How are, how are teachers supposed to teach and students supposed to learn if we have that many calls to one school in one school year? That's a problem. And it goes back to what Councilman Helgason said about discipline. We need to look at what the state's mandate requirement is as far as the maximum amount of discipline and look at what Lynchburg City Schools' policy is and why, why is state up here and we're down here? What can we do to fix that?
No, I think you, I think you answered it well. I think it is, I mean, at the end of the day, we, we talked a lot about leadership. I think there has to be, ultimately, you have to make a big decision, you know, to get control of a situation.
Yes.
So I appreciate that. And I would know with your military experience, you understand
Yes.
kind of what has to be done in situations when they, when they get to a point. So I appreciate that. We have a minute and a half left. Do you just want to give some closing statement?
I do have a closing statement. You know, I have been coming to city council since August, and it's almost a year that I've been coming to see y'all every single week. I'm a, I'm on a first-name basis with all of you, and I appreciate that. I do know that you have a decision to make. And you have to make the best decision for, to fill these three seats that you can. And I want you to know that maybe it's me or maybe it's not me. At the end of the day, I want you to make the best decision that's possible. If it's me, great, I'll do the best I can. If it's not me, you know what? Nothing is going to change. I'm still going to be here for city council meetings. I'm still going to, you know, be cordial to each and every one of you. I want you to make the best decision you can for the school board. I love my city. You all know that. I, I want to serve in the best way I can. Maybe it's on the school board, maybe it's not. I just want you to know from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate the honor of being asked and being interviewed and to know that, you know, y'all have got a tough job to do. And, and I know that and I appreciate it. But I want you to know that if you, regardless if you choose me or not, absolutely no hard feelings. I'm still going to be here. I'm still going to be cheering you guys on and holding your feet to the fire if I need to.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. White.
Are appointed on your next call?
Yes, I will still show up if I'm appointed.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I will still be here.
We appreciate you.
Meetings at the same time, we're going to be here.
No, I actually looked at that.
No, no, you already said, sorry.
I actually, I actually looked at that. The school board meets the first Tuesday.
All right. Well, we are now recessed until 3 o'clock. Thank you so much. Welcome back to the June 21 special call meeting of Lynchburg City Council for the purpose of conducting interviews to the school board. Ms. Finney, please call our next candidate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next is from District Three. It's Mr. Cora Davis, followed by Cheryl Giggits.
Okay. Hello, Ms. Davis. How are you? Good. Thank you for joining us today. Have a seat. Yes, ma'am. Dr. Wilder isn't here, so Councilman Dolan is going to ask the first question on his behalf.
Okay. Hello, thank you. This is Councilmember Wilder's question for you. LCS has over 15-plus programs that address learning loss, achievement gap, credit recovery, acceleration, and more. Which program are you familiar with that has the most impact? And what other program would you like to see to improve test scores in Lynchburg?
So the summer program that's actually currently going on to include pedal and I think is particularly beneficial. However, I do see some areas that we could assist further. And when I say that, there was some hiccups that semantics that make a difference in how successful the program could be. And one of those things were coordination of transportation, which I know sounds pretty basic, but when you're working and trying to get, you know, kids to a program, you may not be as successful if you can't ensure that the per, the children get there and then get back to the destination that they need to get to. It can be really stressful, especially if you have to leave work or not make it to work to get the kids there. So that was one of the concerns as a parent that I saw. Other support that, including the tutoring, the SOL enrichment programs for after-school for eighth graders that occurred this year in the middle school was beneficial. However, we also have some seventh graders that could have benefited from some further enrichment. So although I think it was beneficial, I'm not sure about the turnout rate for that. I know that I had, at the time, a child that was also eligible for that program that we could not get enrolled and involved due to some other obstacles. So she wasn't able to participate. So again, sometimes it's not the program or the intent. Sometimes it's the semantics of targeting the population and how are we going to get them there or encourage them or be able to support getting them there to get them the information that we need to give them to support them and grow them.
Sounds like some of these programs are the best kept secret lack of knowledge that people have about them. So I think that.
And emails were received. I think Lynchburg City Schools does an excellent job with the voicemails plus the emails because I get them on, you know, multiple phones. I get them on all my emails that are in parent portal. So they do a really great job with communication. However, what if I don't have access to that? You know, then that becomes a barrier. And a lot of times, that's the population that we really need to target.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, you can go ahead with your own, your own, your own question now.
So from your application, you have quite a background in social services and public safety. Safety has been an issue in our schools. How would you use that background to provide a safer environment for our students? And what do you see as the biggest challenge to that?
Wow. So generationally, there is quite a bit of difference than what I personally experienced, of course, because we didn't have access to the information that's being pushed on our children, right? We didn't have as many people accessible to us as we do with this, with the current generation due to technology. So technology is amazing and then not so amazing in some areas, right? Especially because they have access to information that we didn't get until we were probably a little bit more equipped to handle it, right? So the best thing I have found that assists with that is to, one, give them a platform where they can understand how to communicate, how to advocate for themselves, such as being able to really talk about things and how to talk to people and not just from a technology basis. I see a lot of things that pan out in school initially starts on social media, especially with the middle school population, even as early as fifth and fourth grade. We start to see that where it starts with social media, with them, you know, having those interactions that are not so positive. And then it plays out into the school environment, which also disrupts learning for those that may not be involved. It also creates anxiety and tension and makes it very difficult for classroom management. So one way is to create platforms where kids feel like they, one, learn how to advocate for themselves, learn how to have a positive outlet for those feelings and emotions because we're not saying that those feelings and emotions aren't valid or true, but being able to know how to manage those in a way that's positive and not harmful to others and understanding impact. Now, it sounds like a lot because I'm talking to you guys, but of course, when you talk to children, it actually comes across differently. So things that I've seen that have been positive, that could be even more positive is things like, like at Sandusky, they have quiet rooms or this forum that children are able to access certain staff or support that they can build relationships with, which is super important because those relationships are what will help guide, and then a child especially, from making better, you know, to making better decisions, from being more impulsive and making those negative decisions. Also, you know, we need more interventions, such as cognitive interventions. I was kind of sad to see that, and, and I know that the pandemic had a lot to do with this, but the lack of school-based services from like day treatment component for children who have special needs and maybe having some emotional distress and required additional support, that's way beyond what, you know, an instructor can do to manage an entire classroom plus attend to a child who may be having some additional needs. I think we are probably in a situation where we're seeing more than less of that, which, like I said, becomes also very disruptive to the entire classroom, making it difficult for the educator to actually be able to teach. So if we could work on that, these are actually things that we also work on with adults. You know, working on that ability to think things through, working on that impulsivity. Creating young thinkers will actually create a more stable community. Encouraging individuals to be able to use coping skills and think and advocate for themselves creates healthier environments. So would assist with supporting and shifting the school environment.
Thank you.
Councilman Helgason?
Hearing the previous answers and seeing your background in sociology, they, you're, they mesh. Talking about the positive influences and the, all the, you know, but being a board member of the school board is going to be a whole different hat.
Yes.
It's going to be a hat that says if the superintendent or the deputies or the school administration or the school board isn't doing a good job, somebody has to get up and say, you're fired. Somebody has to say, this has got to quit. We've got to go a whole different direction because what's been happening has been failing our kids. We've had the high dropout rate. We've had low graduation rate. We've had low enrollment has been declining. Prices and costs to our taxpayers have soared. Tests has shrunk dramatically. So do you think we can make improvements, first of all, with the same board leadership that we've had for the last decades?
I am a bit advocate of change. So.
So, first you have to always look at what has occurred. So, what, whatever, what is the data? What is the data telling us? What have we implemented? What is the outcome from what we've implemented, right? And if it's not working and the evidence doesn't support that it's working, regardless of how we feel.
I guess to the last.
Go ahead.
Decade, do you think it's been working? What they've been doing, regardless of?
I think we have to make some changes. The population has changed. There is no way you can keep doing what you've always done and expect different outcomes. If the outcomes of the data is saying it's not working, things are, if you're talking about declining enrollment, declining graduation, along with changes in codes and legislature, which, you know, is a whole different story, we have to work with what we got. But, within that realm, we can't fail our kids. So, it'll be literally up to us to figure that out. And if it's not working, we have to do something different. Have I ever been put in that predicament? Daily. I am currently a deputy chief. And that means in my current role, if it's not supporting public safety and it's not working, we will change it and we will approach it differently. And that's just non-negotiable. I have children. I have children that go to Lynchburg City Schools. I parent, I also foster, and I am totally invested. Funny thing is, yes, I ended up in adult probation and that's where my career, the bulk of my career has been. However, I have continuously supported children. I started out at Longwood to be a teacher. Elementary education was my major. I switched to social work because I saw a different need and I haven't regretted that change. But, along the way, I've still continued to teach at many different levels. I've continued to pour into our communities. I started here, I am still sworn in in Twenty-Fourth District, which is, includes Lynchburg. And I was originally sworn in here in Lynchburg Circuit Court. So, I have been a part of this community my entire life. I was born in Lynchburg, resided in Campbell for a bulk of my adult life, but served Lynchburg City. So, I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot of changes. I've been involved in the community at many different levels. And when change is needed, it is our obligation and our responsibility to bring about that change.
Thank you.
Councilwomen?
Thank you for being here. Thank you for volunteering to serve and applying. That's fantastic. And, you know, looking, looking at your resume here and that's a tough field, working in corrections. You know, it's, definitely takes a commitment to do that, so I commend you for that, for the years of service you've done to do that. And I'm going to kind of dial in on something different that I've asked previously. But, there's no, well, I'm sure that with the field that you're in now, I would assume that you have a commitment to making sure that the students in Lynchburg City Schools never end up crossing your doorstep in your professional adult life. So, what do, you know, as a school board member, what would you do to eliminate the gang problem within our high schools and middle schools?
So, one, I believe in accountability. That is a part of the entire process. Accountability is, of course, the individuals involved in the activity, but also the individuals that are held responsible for the individuals involved in that activity. So, I think it's a twofold problem. It's not just the children, but it's also who's the guardian? Who's responsible? I have children. I, I don't advocate for gang activity. It's, of course, something that I deal with on a daily basis professionally. But, what I have found is working with that population of gang-involved individuals is that accountability is important. And so, that's first and foremost. Secondly is, okay, well, you can't, that activity has to be monitored. So, we also employ additional conditions or stipulations that cannot occur. I know it sounds, for those who are not well-versed in gang activity, but, you know, you're not going to frequent areas that are known gang areas. You're not going to wear your colors. You're not going to, you know, participate in gang activity if you have been known or found to be doing that. The second piece is, there has to be beyond just the education piece. You have to fill that support with something, with something. So, there has to be a purpose built within that individual that's involved in that activity because it's fulfilling a need somewhere. So, that has to be hit with a treatment piece too. So, first is accountability. The second piece is now we have to heal and give an opportunity for them to build it. Because you're talking about children. So, our goal is to get you to a point where you are now a functioning adult in our community, right? So, in order to do that, that means we need to ensure we equip you with some tools. So, I would advocate for programming and support mentorship. Positive relationships being built by strong, positive community partners and those individuals that are involved to help guide and support them. So, I know it sounds like a simple answer, but it's things that I've seen actually work with the younger adult population that has been brought to my attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Praise the Lord, Ms. Davis. Welcome. Do you think all of our children learn on the same level?
No.
Good. So, what would you do to help the elementary schools with the learning problem? With the children, you have children in the classroom that's excelling.
Yes.
And then you have children in the classroom that's not.
Yes.
Do you think the kids that's not excelling need to be off to the side a little bit with a different teacher in a different classroom and the children that's moving ahead?
I've seen more than one model work for this. So, additional support is definitely needed to adapt to, you know, the needs, special, the specific needs of the child. However, I also find that pulling them totally out of the mix with the other children that are excelling actually sometimes can be a small deficit because some kids learn by watching others. And that could be actually sometimes helpful to have other children that are maybe a level above, but I also maybe can reach you in a way that you may understand and start to pick that up. So, yes, I think additional support is needed and that may require to pull them aside for a portion or a time period, but not totally pull them aside. Also, things would need to be done to actually address the specific educational needs of that child. Because it's not just, I am falling behind. There's always a why, right? And sometimes that why, and a lot of times that why, may be an unknown diagnosis or an assessment that may need, that needs to be completed in order to have more information so we can better address those needs of that child. And unfortunately, sometimes parents aren't as aware of what may be going on, right? If I'm not familiar with certain diagnosis or have that information, how would I know I'm seeing those signs and symptoms in my own child? Enough to say, "Hey, I think something's going on. Let's, can I get, what process or what do I need to do to get my, my child some help?" Sometimes that piece isn't there. So, we may need to be able to look at that specific, you know, those kids and say, "Hey, this is what we may need to do. Here's some assessment information. What do we need to do to better support them? What's a plan to help them get to the level they need to be where they're functioning?" And that's one thing I've struggled with. And I, eleven years ago, I had unexpected custody of a child that was a Child Protective Services case in Lynchburg City. And I have permanent guardianship of her. So, I got her when she was just turned two years old. And just because of my level of education and so forth, I very quickly noticed, oh my goodness, we've got some developmental things going on here. So, early on, I, of course, had her involved with, in various assessments, therapist, psychologist, and so on, right? So, I advocated to get her before child study early, get her in our pre-K program because I knew transition into school would be difficult for her. We would have some challenges. Well, all in all, fast forward, I think she was five when I finally got the full gamut of diagnosis. She's on the spectrum. She's autistic. And it was a very difficult transition into school for her. Very difficult. And it took a lot of advocate, advocating on my part. And all I could think of is, what if I didn't know? What if I didn't know? Where would this kid be? Because in pre-K, she was destroying the principal's office, jumping off of counters and desks, and quite a bit of, right, of, you know, phone calls every day going on. And this is before we knew exactly all that was going on. Fast forward today, she is a student at Sandusky Middle. She's a riding, rising seventh grader. She does not have an IEP, but she continues to have support services outside of school. She has straight A. She was on the scholar list for the entire year. The entire year. Most don't know she's on the spectrum. Most don't know. But, um, early on, I had to advocate and say, "Where's the parent-teacher conferences? I need to talk to teachers." And of course, teachers were like, "She doesn't, we don't have any problems with her." "No, no, 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 I need to talk to you." Because, see, I believe that education of our children is a partnership and that is the only way that this actually successfully works. It takes myself and the teachers and the administration and the staff and the support people in order to ensure my child's success. So, I need to talk to you. So, I'm used to parent-teacher conferences and, of course, because of the pandemic and the transition back into school, there was some wonkiness. So, I'm calling all around. I'm calling guidance counselors. I'm blowing up emails and finally, I get it all together. We got parent-teacher conferences and they say, "Well, we really didn't know why you asked for this. Because there's some stuff I need you to know because this is a partnership." So, it is not only my experiences and my knowledge that say, "Hey, sometimes we need to say why." The simple question, "Why?" What's going on? What do we need to look at? And what information do we need in order to better support? And just those simple things can set a child up for success. And I've seen it.
It comes back to proactive parenting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest in serving. I don't know if you've been watching some of the interviews or not, but I've been asking just a very similar question to the applicants. So, if you haven't heard it, my purpose in asking is to really hone in on what, what is our goal? What is our purpose for our public education system within the city? And for me, it all boils down to graduate students, to give them the education they need and then to graduate them. Now, of course, there's going to be a lot of, pardon me, there's going to be a lot of levers and a lot of adjustments that are contained with, well, what type of graduation, what type of graduate, right? There's a lot of lead-up. But, with that being the case, I think one of our candidates said something to the effect of the what follows the why and the why is, we're doing it is to get you graduated. So, I'm going to give you some data and it's going to be a little bit harder, it might be a little bit hard to track, but I'll, I'll frame it for you so you can understand why I'm asking the question. If you were to take Lynchburg and compare it to the counties from an educational basis, there are some who would criticize that, that logic because the, the need of the student is different from the county to the city and vice versa. So, if you take the city to an organization called Virginia First Cities, which Lynchburg is a member of, and you compare similar demographics, similar urban environment, older cities, right? You can then get a comparable, if you will. The city of Newport News has a graduation rate of ninety-five point eight. Charlottesville has a graduation rate of ninety-three. Stanton has eighty-five point seven. Petersburg eighty-seven. Roanoke has eighty-five. Harrisonburg has eighty-five. Lynchburg is at eighty point one. Now, one of our previous candidates pointed out how individual schools were at a certain metric. I believe that was for, just for those who may have been watching this, I believe that was for one particular year, but I digress. Okay, now, I'm going to tie this to the poverty rate. So, remember, I just gave you a list of all of these graduation rates and now the poverty rate because oftentimes when we articulate, "Well, this is the graduation rate." Well, well, it's the poverty rate. That's really what's holding this back. Newport News has a poverty rate of fifteen point eight. Charlottesville has a poverty rate of twenty-three point one. Stanton twelve point three. Petersburg twenty-one point three. Roanoke eighteen point four. Harrisonburg twenty-five point eight. Lynchburg seventeen point six. Again, I know it's a lot of data, but here's, here's the takeaway that I would like you to respond to and hear how you would focus on graduation. In this instance, you want a, a wider delta, meaning you want a high graduation rate and a low poverty rate. Newport News comes out at top. They've got a ninety-five point eight graduation rate and a poverty rate of fifteen point eight. Lynchburg is on the complete opposite of the spectrum. They have, we have the lowest graduation rate and the second closest gap. So, with that very lengthy context, how will you, as a school board member, focus on the goal? And how will that filter through your decision-making with the ultimate mindset of, we want to graduate students? And of course, quality students, but we want to graduate students. How would you respond to that and how does that filter through your decision-making as a school board member?
So, as you were talking about the data, the first thing I'm asking myself, well, what are, what are they doing? I want to know what the highest graduating rate, what are some of the programs that they're implementing? And how do they implement them to help support the success and graduation rate of their students? I mean, I'm about working smarter and I, actually, data has been a, I love data. But, data is only as good as the, um, good data in, good data out, pretty much. I've also seen data been manipulated, so I like clean data. But, I'm also about, well, let's take a look. What are, what are other jurisdictions doing to increase their graduation rate? And what are some of the issues they were having and how did they address them? Because there are some other models out there and I know that those models have been successful. So, one, I want to look at that. Two, I want to look at our, of course, our unique issues that we're having here. Also, though, I want to preface this with, yes, I want to definitely increase graduation rates, but I only, I don't want to just graduate people either.
Right.
Like, that's a whole nother issue. So, I, I need them to graduate, but I need them to earn their, I need them to earn their diploma. And what do we need to do to support them to earn it? Because it does me no good to give them a piece of paper and they end up in my office.
Yeah. And see, that speaks to where, where, at least where the, the heart of the question came from. So, if our goal, from my perspective, is to graduate students, okay, well, just on that alone, we're not meeting that according to this data. But, then adding to that, if we're not meeting our current objective with the current situation, what are the implicating factors that are impacting that? Of course, just as you said, but also, we're not meeting our own expectation.
Exactly.
And so, for me, yes, while I'm focusing on the graduation rate, by focusing on the goal, it impacts every other decision. I know there's a lot of talk right now about this social issue or this cultural impact or it's poverty or it's this and mental health, all valid things to be debating one side of the issue. But, ultimately, my mindset is, if it, if it doesn't push me closer to the objective, why am I focusing so hard on it? And the number one objective for my book this year with appointing school board candidates is, how will you take that to the board with that tenacity of, I- I want to make sure the academics and the graduation of these students is utmost priority? I think, I really think you did answer the question. I appreciate it. Is there anything else you wanted to add with that?
No, but I think that also goes back to what Mr. Helgelson was talking about. Like, if it's not working, are you afraid to say, no, it's not working. We can't do it? That goes back to that. If it's not working, clearly, something's not working. We've got to go back to the joint board, and we need to do something different.
Yeah, thank you.
We're almost out of time, so I just wanted to tell you, I'm very impressed. I think, I've never met you before, but I'm just really inspired by a lot of the things on your resume, which people could see all the things you've done because how cool. I mean, having the background in social work and being, working for CPS, which I know is a very challenging job, and then fostering special needs children, which is very commendable. So thank you for that because that is very, very special to do. And then having your leadership experience as a probation officer is also commendable. So kudos to you for what you've done and how you serve. Is there anything you would like to say as closing remarks?
No, but I do appreciate your time. I am committed to our community regardless. If I sit on this board, whatever, I am still a citizen here in Lynchburg. And as much as I can do, I will continue to do.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our next candidate is Cheryl Gidgetts, joining us virtually, followed by Andrew Glover.
Yes, yes. Hello, Ms. Gidgetts. How are you?
Good afternoon. I'm well. And you?
Good. Okay, so I'm going to tell you that there's a little delay thing happening here with, when you speak and we speak. So when one of our council members asks you a question, if you would maybe answer briefly and pause and let the council member maybe offer another response versus giving a long-winded response, just so that we don't have to try to flag you down or wave you, wave at you if you're, if they wanted to kind of interrupt or interject something, okay? Okay?
Understood.
We're going to start. Dr. Wilder's not here today, so Councilwoman Dolan is going to ask his question first on his behalf.
Hi, good afternoon, Cheryl. LCS has over 15-plus programs that address learning loss, achievement gap, credit recovery, acceleration, and more. Which programs are you familiar with that has the most impact? And what other program would you like to see to improve test scores in Lynchburg?
Well, that is a great question. And I think I'm not aware of every program around, but I do know of several that I think have been performing quite well. One is the Y, the YMCA. They have a wonderful summer program for scholars. And that's where the teachers really can recommend students who need a little bit of help over the summer, certainly so they don't lose what they've learned in the year, but really kind of help them get to where they need to be in the upcoming year. I think that's a really great program. It seems to be something that both the teachers find valuable, their parents find valuable, and the students really do learn and retain a lot. I think also the Jubilee Program is a great program. I will say probably maybe just a little bit more familiar with the things that they do because I come from a technology background. So they do a lot on the STEM side, which is something that I've spent a lot of time over the years investing in and working with different areas. So I think that's another program that does a great job. And then I know we have other programs within certainly our high schools that really kind of help lift up our kids.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Well, yeah, you do have a strong background in technology. And you indicate that you have a passion for implementing technology in education. Are you referring to STEM programs? And if so, and if not, what is it? And then how would you see this implemented? And at what grade level as a school board member?
Well, so I think, you know, it can be, technology can be implemented at all levels. I could just share a little bit. I've been on the Technology Council here for our region for, you know, well over a decade, probably about a decade and a half. And we were instrumental in developing the STEM Academy that we have currently, which has been very successful. So that really helps our high school students. Currently, I am also on the Future Focus Foundation Board. And what we have been doing, at least in the STEM genre, has been having educational seminars for our teachers in the elementary schools and try to help teach them how they can incorporate STEM education really into the sciences and math classes that they already have, you know, that they're already working within. So those have been quite successful, and I think the teachers have been enjoying them. So we can certainly bring STEM in in every aspect. I also believe not just the STEM education piece, but I believe technology in general. I know we've done a lot, you know, to get Chromebooks into the hands of kids, but I think there's really a lot more that we can do, possibly, if we work together and look for grants and things of that nature, really to bring even more technology into our schools. And that can be, you know, from kindergarten all the way up through high school. And not only give them more opportunity to deal with technology inside the classroom, but also see what we can do to help, you know, take that technology home. So as they're continuing to work after the school days, they would have access to different pieces of technology that would really benefit them. We certainly know our kids are all about screen time now, not reading a book as much, unfortunately. But I think there's just things that maybe we can work together and help them gain access to technology. Certainly, we're already on the road to trying to getting broadband, you know, throughout our jurisdictions and our localities. But even if we don't have that ubiquitously everywhere, I think there's things that we can do, much like we did during COVID, which is having hotspots and things like that. I'd just like to see us develop something that's just a little more strategic and long-term in nature.
So you would probably be supportive of this for an educational curriculum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Halderson?
Good afternoon. How do you think our schools are doing?
Well, I think we're facing some challenges right now. And I certainly don't think COVID helped us. I think it took our kids out of school, which is certainly, a lot of learning loss happened over that time. I know I myself, you know, had a grandchild in college, didn't get to graduate, and, you know, missed a lot of the things. And she really struggled even at that, you know, elevated level to really keep up with classwork and not be in that atmosphere where they could, you know, see teachers and talk with teachers and work with other students. So I think that's really helped us fall further behind, and maybe is the best way to say that. But I think some of it is things that we can look at as to just what we're doing in our school systems and how maybe we can think differently about education. And in how certainly things like, we need to get our arms around, you know, how our students behave in school, right? We need to get our arms around that, that whole behavior issue. Because I think a school classroom needs to be something that's respectful, not only on the educator's side, but also on the student's side. And how we can bring parents more integrated into the learning process. I know that's really invaluable to help a student really achieve greatness in their educational career is to have that support system, not only in the schools, because that has to stop at some point when they leave, but also on the home level. So I think there's a lot more work we can do to make it a very positive and beneficial experience for our kids. And really, I just heard the last part of the previous interview talking about graduation rates. My opinion is what, certainly, they need to graduate, absolutely. But part of that, I've always felt, is we're training them to go into the workforce, right? To be valuable members of the community and be able to get a job and hold a job and even, you know, move up in that job. So we need to get them employable.
So do you think our schools are being successful? I know you said there's some challenges.
You know, I'm not sure that I could say we're successful at this point. There are definitely challenges. I think some of our private schools may have figured out some things that our public schools could learn from. I think certainly class size is a big factor in how well our schools do. And I know our class sizes in the public schools is probably larger than it needs to be. Not sure what we can do about that because I know we're having trouble finding teachers and hiring teachers and keeping them. Part of that is probably what we pay them. We have to be mindful that we need to pay them certainly a living wage and something that's comparable to what other jurisdictions, certainly around us, and even maybe a little broader than that, are paying them. But also giving them the resources and the tools that they need to be able to teach effectively.
Councilman Missions?
So you stated just a moment ago that COVID took us out of schools. So the first part of my question is, was it COVID that took us out of schools? Or perhaps the decision-making process of the school board?
Well, I would have to say both because clearly it was the school board that made the decision to close schools. But also, they certainly were compelled to do what the state basically mandated that they do, which that mandate then came from the federal government. So I think that oftentimes, we have to acquiesce to what some others have mandated that we do. And then there's always the issue of safety of our students. No one wants their child to be in an environment where they're going to stick, you know, get sick or possibly perish. So that's really a tough one to answer, honestly. Could we have made different decisions? Could we have made decisions a little quicker that might have made that better? We probably could. I'm not sure I am the expert to really be able to say what we should or should not have done at that time.
So, you know, going on with that, it was the school board that made that decision because the other county schools around here did not shut down the same way that Lynchburg City Schools did for the next school year. We were the only ones in the region that shut down the way we did. And you kind of just dialed in on something else that, you talked about the experts. And I have to acquiesce to what we're being told to do. And what we're learning now is that the experts were extremely wrong on a lot of things regarding that. And that's kind of playing out. So that's a real concern of mine because I don't want to appoint somebody to the school board who's just going to follow the experts and follow the experts because we see how often the experts have been wrong. Do you have the courage to stand up and do the right thing in the face of the experts, which could even be the superintendent? And tell them what they're doing is wrong and step in and do the right thing when it just makes sense to do that?
Well, I could say for me personally, I operate with kindness and courage every day because I think that's the right thing to do. Maybe I could answer that best by saying, if I had been asked at the time, would I have voted to close the school? I would not have. That's based on what I knew then and certainly what I know now. Would I always stand up for my convictions? Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilman Taylor? Councilman Falding?
Thank you for your interest in serving. I believe I heard that you had heard my question and responded to it briefly. But the heart behind it, yes, of course, is to say, I want students to graduate. But it's more to show my priority of, if we don't have a laser focus on one objective, everything else behind that can fall through to a significant degree. And so while I understand what you're saying, you know, we want to focus on other things within that education and the quality of the student, it's a cascading effect. And so I'd be very curious to see how you, as a school board member, would bring that singular focus to Lynchburg City Schools, the school board, when going through all the policies of the day and all the political implications of the climate we're in, if it doesn't help us get these students to where they need to be, I don't want to focus on it. That could be a far-right issue. It could be a far-left issue. I'm just curious how you would take that to the school board and make that your mindset?
Right. Well, I think, again, just for me personally, what I would bring to the school board is that focus on employability. So I believe our goal is to educate our children up to the point where they learn what they need to be a positive and productive citizen in our community and be an employable citizen in our community. And, you know, that certainly doesn't mean that they're not going to go on to potentially, you know, for your educations, our community college. You know, I personally went up through all of them, community college, and then college, and then the master. So I understand all of that. Of course, I also did that while I was working. I believe that our singular focus should be to help children become that positive person in our community and make them employable. And to be employable, you need a high school diploma. I think all of our studies tell us that. That's the bare minimum. You need to have that high school diploma to graduate. But also, I feel like you need to prepare them for whatever is next in their life, if it's to go on to higher education or if it's to go directly into a job. So I think every decision that we make as a board member, every policy, every procedure, really every program that we bring into our schools, we need to be focused on that, that objective. And that objective is to get them to that next level, whether it's college, whether it's a job. And to do that, it's to graduate. I think that there probably are programs that we need to revisit because they may be detract from that. But I will also say there are a lot of programs in our school system. For instance, you know, the arts programs and sports that also teach our kids how to work together, how to be good team members, right? How to be able to work in an environment such as an office, right? When you go to your first job, you have to be able to work with others. You have to be able to hear others and be able to convey your information such that they hear and understand you. So I'm not dismissing other programs that are beneficial, but I do think that we need to focus pretty singularly on how do we prepare our children to be employable and to be valuable members of our community?
Hello. So what three qualities do you think make you a really strong candidate for being on the school board?
Well, I certainly have a passion for education. That's something that, you know, been part of educational endeavors really all of my adult life. Certainly have found that to be very meaningful to me personally as well. So it's that passion for education. I think it's also really wanting to shore up our community and help give our children, our kids, that opportunity to be very successful and to be able to contribute back to our community. I know a lot of what the programs that I've been part of were to help educate technical from a technology perspective because that's, you know, that's my background. That's where my heart lies. But also to try to keep them here in our communities, right? Not to educate them so that they can leave and, you know, move somewhere else, but try to build, continue to build our community such that it's as successful as it can be. Then I also feel like, and maybe I can bring some insight on the technology side, maybe help us think differently about how we're implementing technologies, what technologies we're implementing, and not let the first thought we be, well, that's too expensive. Let's not look at it. Because there's a lot of ways to be able to fund technologies in our schools. And it's not just asking the school board for money or even asking the state for money. It's really looking at different grants and different partnerships with other programs that I think could help take us to the next level in the technology perspective of our schools.
Is there something specific about LCS, like, that stands out to you that you feel like this is the first thing that I would want to tackle and discuss if I got onto the school board?
So that's an interesting question. I guess maybe I would say, and I've done this on another board, it was like, we need to be respectful. I think honestly, our school board needs to be a school board that listens to not only the students and the superintendent, but also to the parents. And we need to have a discourse that's respectful. I've seen some meetings that honestly, I was not proud of on behalf of the city of Lynchburg, and I think that's very important. We need to bring that civility and that respect back to every meeting that we have. And then, I think once we do that, we'll be really put ourselves in a position that we can start to hear each other's ideas and start to implement things that will help our kids.
Thank you. Okay, we're at 16 minutes. Councilwoman Dolan, do you have another question?
No, I do not.
No? Councilman Missions? Councilman Taylor?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Where is she?
You just go ahead and ask. You're on the mic, so go ahead.
Good afternoon. My question is, how do you think CRT will help our city schools?
How do I think it will help? Not quite sure how to answer that.
Why should you answer it?
No, do you specifically ask, do you think it will help?
Are, are you referring to critical race theory?
Yes.
Oh, okay. You'll forgive me, I live in a world that's full of acronyms and many of them can mean different things, so I was trying to make sure I understood exactly. Um, so, so what is your question? How do I think it will help? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. How do you think it will help our public school system by teaching CRT?
To be perfectly candid with you, I'm not sure it will help. I, I think, uh, I think a lot of the programs in our schools are maybe veering away from really true, truly educating our children, again, to be employable and to be productive members of society. Not that there's not a place for this level of discussion, I'm just not sure that that should be a focus.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I think it seems like everybody's asked the questions that they had for you, so if you have any closing remarks, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Um, I'm not sure this bodes well or not, I've finished quite early, but thank you for your time, I certainly appreciate it. I know, I will say that I've also been watching some of the council meetings and I know they've been hard, but we certainly, as, um, as members of the community, appreciate all that you do and that you take on the hard issues and even some of the issues between yourselves where you have to disagree respectfully, we certainly appreciate that and all that you're doing. And I think what I would leave with you is that I would like to see our school board be a help to you, not something that's, you know, I, I seem to find a lot of conflict, I work with a lot of jurisdictions around Virginia in my, in my work profession, and I see a lot of animosity between school boards and boards of supervisors and city council. And I would really like to see that not be the case in Lynchburg. I would like for the school board to be a group of people who are a help and a support to our school superintendent and to our kids, which means we need to actually visit the schools and get to know them. Um, but also, we need to be that, that level of support and help to you as city council. You need to be able to trust us to be making good decisions and giving you wise counsel that you can rely on.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate your time, your time.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, we are ahead of schedule, but I do see Mr. Glover in the audience, so if you would like, we can go ahead and call Mr. Andrew Glover, District Three.
Mr. Glover, if you're ready, go ahead.
And I'll be followed by FJ DeLillo.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Do you guys take of interviews yet? Is this number 13? Yeah?
I don't know what number this is. Next to last, whatever that is.
All right. 50, wow, all right.
All right, Dr. Wilder is not here, so Councilman Mendolyn will be asking his question on his behalf.
So, this is a question from, uh, Councilmember Wilder. LCS has over 15 programs that address learning loss, achievement gap, credit recovery, acceleration, and more. Which programs are you familiar with that has been the most impactful? And what other program would you like to see to improve test scores in Lynchburg?
Yeah, so, the honest truth is, I'm not familiar and I, and I follow the schools quite closely, and I'm not familiar with all 15. Uh, some of the ones that stand out to me are some of the summer programs going on right now, which, uh, Pedals and Empowerment, um, some of the empowerment programs, uh, designed to, uh, stem learning loss, help kind of bring kids back up and bring, uh, prevent, uh, any type of, of educational loss over the summer, you know? Historically, when, without these programs, what would happen is kids would go home and they'd play video games or, or pursue other ventures for two or three months and then come back and the teachers would have to start back from square one in some cases. And so, seeing these programs that continue during the pro, uh, summer, I think are hugely beneficial. As I mentioned, I think one of the problems is, is that 15 programs, that's a lot, and I don't even know what they all are. Some of them, uh, I do have concerns with, or at least portions of concerns with. Uh, the empowerment, uh, program is one that I think is really interesting. It's designed to help, uh, at-risk students and, and students with particular, uh, challenges and, and discipline challenges regain credit, and yet it's a half-day of school. And so, one recent example is you had a student who was at this program, half-day of school, went to school, and, and then was out of school the other half-day, ended up committing a quite serious crime. And so, I think that of those 15 programs, we really need to take a look and see, are they being effective at, at what goal? You know, it's great to say at 15 programs, but if they're not being effective, then, uh, it's not a program that I think we necessarily need.
So, are you saying the crimes that are being committed are caused by the kids that go to the empowerment academy?
I'm saying in one case, that was true.
Oh, in one case, okay.
Yeah, a- and certainly, we need to look at, is, is that program being successful? Or is there a better way that we can be accomplishing that? Or are there other programs that might be more beneficial? One program that I think would be hugely beneficial is kind of bringing back the, the idea of some basic life skills, you know? Kids go to, go to high school, but then they graduate and have never done taxes, you know? They, they don't know how to cook, they don't know how to apply for jobs, and there's some really basic life skills that I think that would be hugely beneficial to get these kids into, to, to be able to say, yes, you can do the, the math and you can do the, the literature, that's great, but you also need to be able to know what it means to be a productive citizen and what does that look like?
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, I get to, well, good afternoon, I get to ask my question now as Councilman Mendolyn. Uh, an effective school board is a balanced organization of people who are able to set aside their own priorities and work solely for what has been, best benefited for the school district. Tell me about a time when you advocated for a group or populations whose beliefs or circumstances were different than yours and how you were able to place your personal beliefs aside to serve the larger community?
Yeah, so, in my professional career, I do a lot of cross-functional leadership. Uh, it's a, one of the primary things that I do, and so, I'm always kind of brought in to help balance all these competing goals and, and, you know, and in a business environment, certainly that's not necessarily a school environment, but every department within, within a business, you know, is going to have their own competing goals and, and I come in and I help, I may be able to say, okay, finance has this, this goal that they need and they think that this is a top priority. And, um, maybe marketing has a different one and operations has a different one, and to be able to look at everything holistically and say, okay, we have an imperative, the imperative is, and in this case, it's, uh, edu- educating our students, what do we need to do collectively to get there? Uh, it's, it's not just one, looking at one thing, it's looking at everything.
Oh, okay, thank you. Councilman Helgeson?
Well, good afternoon. There, there's a saying, the difference between a good economist and a bad economist. A bad economist tells you what happened. A good economist tells you what may happen or what probably will happen if you go down a certain path. We've had a lot of interviews, um, as you mentioned, about 15 interviews so far, lots of people keep talking about some of the problems where the learning loss because of COVID and because of the response to COVID. Even yesterday, the vice chairman, who is an infectious disease physician, said those are bad, a poor decision, closing schools for as long as they did. I look at the good economist and the bad economist. We're looking, everybody's now saying, oh, this was so terrible. Principals that I've spoken with, all of them said unanimously the same thing, this was terrible how the city responded. And I look back at that time when COVID happened. I remember there's two people sitting behind this dais that said, schools need to open. That was me and, and Chris Frawley. Outside of this dais was you, going to the school board and saying, this is going to be terrible. This is what is going to happen if you go down this path. You know, it's easy for lots of times for people to say, oh, well, that was terrible in hindsight. Well, anybody can do that. The difficulty is being the good economist that says what would happen in the future. So, prefacing, you know, s- setting the stage with that, do you think LCS can go forward and improve with the same board leadership that we've had for the last decade?
Um, I know that it's been said in this chamber, uh, by other candidates, and I've watched some of those interviews, but your definition of insanity is doing the same thing over again and expecting a different result. I think that there were decisions made that I would severely disagree with, I think that there's continuing to be some decisions that I'm disagreeing with. Uh, and, you know, I, I can sit here Monday Day quarterback and tell, you know, you know, say, oh, I told you so. I told you so doesn't get the ball moving, getting the ball moving means cha- changing and pivoting, and I think that the school system as a whole needs a major pivot.
A ma- in, in, what kind of fashion do you think, just maybe some major pivots? What, what's some things that are?
So, the biggest challenge, we got, we got a variety of challenges, I think a lot of them are, are related to culture, and so, you need to address the culture within LCS, you know? And, and everything comes back down to, uh, to the leadership that is, is governing and steering that cultural ship, you know? And I think as soon as you can address the, the culture, you're going to start chipping away at some of these other things and even hopefully not just chipping away, but making major improvements and major steps to improving, uh, student behavior, teacher retention, a- and some other really critical things that need to get solved and need to get solved fast.
Thank you.
Councilman Missions?
Thank you for, uh, being here, Mr. Glover, and stepping up to, uh, serve, I really appreciate that. So, kind of maybe segueing in a little more detail on, on what you discussed with Councilman Helgeson. It's my belief, uh, based on what I've been told, talking to many teachers, and I'm sure you've talked to many teachers within the system and other staff members.
I have.
That it is, uh, the, the mass departure from Lynchburg City Schools of veteran employees, veteran educators, the exact type of folks that we want to retain because they're successful at teaching children, wasn't primarily due to pay, while that was a factor. Um, it was more a lack of, uh, discipline within the schools and a lack of support from the administration and the central office. And interestingly enough, throughout these interviews, one of the things that we've all learned is how, um, the school board had the authority to, to override a lot of disciplinary recommendations that were coming from principals. So, with that being the case, can you maybe tell me what, as a school board member, your idea would be on that? Do you think that the school board, um, as kind of a governing body over the division, but still somewhat political, because you're appointed by elected officials, uh, sh- is that the place for an appeal process for discipline? Or should there be something different set up to ensure we're doing, uh, our parents and our children justice to get behaviors headed in the right direction?
Yeah, so, discipline issues and student behavior in schools are, are one of the biggest issues facing, uh, LCS and certainly as a whole, but else, you know, LCS particularly. Uh, and, and I have a few ideas on how to solve that, but one of the biggest things that we can do is bring consistency into the equation, and right now, there's no consistency in the disciplinary actions being handed out. And, and you referenced, uh, some of the reversals that the school board members are making at the 364, 365 meetings. Those are only the most egregious cases and they're reversing those, but there's even things getting to the principal level where the student, the teachers will send a student who's misbehaving to the principals, and the principal will turn around and send them right back to the classroom, generally within 15, 20 minutes, and, and nothing's changing. And so, really what needs to happen is we need to take the set of rules that already exists, take a double look at them, make sure that they, they are sufficient, add on where we feel we need to add on, but most importantly, be consistent in the way that those rules and then the, the, uh, consequences of, of rule breaking is consistently followed. I had a wonderful conversation with Dr. Gupta, who's been trying to put into place, um, a, a system that would bring some of these consistency and, and be able to solve some of these issues that don't make it to the board level, and the current administration has prevented that from even coming to the school board agenda, um, to, it would basically empower the school principals to be able to make these decisions earlier on and be able to reinforce these things. And there, right now, the principals don't even have that power right now. So, we need to give the principals the power that they need to be consistent in the, the application of these violations.
Do you think the school board should be offered, uh, or should be a part of the equation in, in the appeal process? Or do you think that there should be a different way to appeal that, once it gets to a certain level?
Um, my hope is, is that you can reduce the need and if you can, if you can prevent the violations from ever reaching that. I think that the school board does have a place where, where the school board is involved in, in certain disciplinary actions, but certainly, we need to reduce that. You know, a student smoking pot, um, on a school bus, that needs to be an issue that's addressed with a student, but that, does that really need to make it all the way to the school board level? If we have a set of rules, uh, in place, we can address those a whole in a lot better manner and be consistent about that. One, um, my father, who is just a hero to mine, put it this way, he says, uh, kids are natural gamblers. You know, they have an inherent kind of nature to gamble on things, and so, they will look at a situation and they will make the decision whether, and they will gamble whether their action is worth the consequence. And if you're inconsistent in that consequence, that equation tilts it to their, into that kid's favor. And so, they know, I'm going to get a slap on the wrist or it's not even going to be addressed, they're a whole lot more likely to continue in that behavior until that equation shifts the wrong way and it's no longer worth the gamble for them.
Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes. How you doing, Brother Glover?
Doing great.
Speaking to the, what you just said, it came to my attention that a teacher sent a student to the principal's office for acting out in, in the classroom. The principal sent the student back to the class and told the instructor, if you cannot control your classroom, you need to find another job.
Yeah.
Could that be one of the reasons we have teacher shortage?
I think that that's a, a large reason, yes, and...
And what would you do to help the teachers?
Um, one of the things that I think is really important is, is one, making leadership aware of these issues. And right now, I think that we need, we don't have a great process to let school board members know where these issues are. So, one thing I would want to create is a, is a better feedback mechanism for teachers to be, bring priority issues, um, t- directly to the school board leadership, um, that don't necessarily have to go through their normal lines of, um, of, of power. You know, if I have a, a problem with my boss, and to get to my boss's boss, I have to go through my boss, do you think that problem's ever going to get to the, to the ultimate leader answers? No. Uh, so, that's the first thing, is that we need to make sure that these issues are, are made visible so they can be addressed. Uh, the second is, is that we need to have, and it goes back to that consistency, that's, we have rules on the books to deal with these behaviors and we need to be consistent in it. If, if a teacher gets swerved at, that needs to be dealt with appropriately. You know, some, and, and I, I discussed with some ideas on student behavior, one thing that I'd love to be able to see is, what if you brought community service into the equation for disciplinary actions, instead of just saying, you know what, we're going to suspend you for one or two days? Well, this kid probably doesn't want to be there at school anyway, and to, to a certain degree, if a student is mouthing off, being disobedient, i- is creating disruption in the classroom, yes, that student needs to be removed from the school so that they're not a disruption and, and a safety hazard to the teacher and to the classroom, but that doesn't mean that the kid should get a free pass by not going to school. What can we do to put into place some sort of community program to where, uh, they're actually, need to actually work off, or, or part of that is some type of, of, of community service aspect, you know? If you're going to throw a chair at a teacher, yes, you need to be suspended, but there needs to be other consequences. With that, that can't just be, you're, we're going to kick you out of school.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Frawley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Glover, I appreciate your application and, and everything you're, you're doing, and, um, I've watched over the last few years, um, and observed, and, uh, Madam Mayor, I would say I'm, I'm confident that I know enough to make a sound decision on Mr. Glover's application.
Okay.
So, you know, and I'll say this kind of in jest, there's no shock to anybody that you've been vocal about your concerns with LCS over the last years. And, you know, we know that you have some passionate feelings about the schools and the school board. I'm curious, and I know you have children, do you have one at LCS now?
No, I do not. My two school-aged children attend a private school.
Private school, okay, and then there's one still at home?
Yes, my two-year-old is still at home.
Okay, and so, are the two at private school because of your concerns with LCS? Can I ask that? Do you mind?
Yeah, so, originally, my two oldest were in the LCS system. They started, my oldest started at Heritage. And then, my middle one, Caleb, he, we got him into TC Miller, which is an invitational school, sort of like a magnet school. And when Caleb got that placement in kindergarten, they were able to bring Riley over at the same time. Night and day difference between the Heritage and TC Miller, a fantastic program that they've got going on there. Everything shut down and we started seeing issues in the curriculum. And then, nothing reopened. And then, when they finally did reopen, we had continuing issues with the teachers and then that wasn't being addressed. And then, we had issues with, you know, we had one case where my son, and my son is special needs, right? He's autistic, he also has a mental disorder called DMDD. And so, he does have some certain special needs. And they took my son at recess and they kept him masked and they kept somebody who struggles already in a mask all day. And then, he finally gets out to recess and they draw a 10 by 10 chalk border on the playground. And they tell him, "You can't go leave this chalk square." You know, a 10 by 10, prisoners can go into a prison and play basketball. But my, at the time, six or seven-year-old wasn't allowed to leave this 10 by 10 area during recess. And we pulled them. That wasn't a learning environment that was going to help him succeed. And certainly, I can get into other issues, but ultimately, yes. The answer is, is that LCS was not listening to me as a parent. I am one of the lucky parents that I have a job that affords me the opportunity to place them into a private education. I'm one of probably around 40% of students in Lynchburg, or parents in Lynchburg, who have found alternative education outside of the LCS system, because LCS hasn't historically worked with parents. I don't want that to happen to other parents who don't have the means. I want to be part of the process and part of the change to help revolutionize that and help make it to where people who don't have the means can still ensure that their needs are being listened to and that their kid's going to have the absolute best outcome possible.
No, and I totally appreciate that and I agree. I think that all the people that rely on LCS need to have the best experience, because we know, I think, every parent should love and want that for their, love their children the same way that we do and want that for their children. So, I totally agree with you. Because I know how passionate you are about LCS specifically and what you want for all the students, and I know that you've probably been planning on running for the school board for some time, have you had a chance to go to all the schools in our, in LCS and talk to the principals specifically about some of the issues specific to each school? As I, I don't know if you've listened to me in some of the other interviews, talking about like, there are specific issues that are kind of unique to some of our schools.
Sure.
As well as issues that are kind of, you know, shared amongst the schools.
Yeah, I have not been to every single one of them, no. As a parent without a student in some of these school systems, I don't particularly have the best access.
Right.
You know, earlier, earlier you had a candidate, and I forget the parent's name, who pointed out that even parents are struggling to get into some school buildings.
Or communicated via email, I'm just trying to think.
Certainly, communication, again, not with every school. But I do speak with teachers and personnel in a lot of different schools and do have a general understanding.
So, in those conversations that you've had with parents or teachers outside of the school, since you haven't had a chance to get into all the schools and maybe see all the specific issues that our schools are facing individually or collectively, what would you say is your biggest concern that we're facing overall? And what is your solution that you have to that problem?
There's, I was, there's so many concerns. And student behavior is really high one, I've already addressed that. So, please, when I say, give some other ones, student behavior is one of them. There's a large disconnect between the frontline working teachers and some of the staff members and the administration, to where the two departments are not, or not departments, but the two functions don't get feedback working in a way that provides change and moves in the right direction. That's everything from curriculum decisions to, one really big thing that you're hearing from every teacher is that the kids are being overtested. And teachers have gone to the school board multiple times, saying, "We're having to do too many tests," because they're testing to the IXL requirements. And IXL has them taking these tests that are every two weeks, in some cases even more frequent, and it's not giving the teachers time to actually teach the material. They're literally going from one test to the next. And yes, that sounds great, and the reason given for that is, oh, we want to, from an administration, be able to monitor and put our thumb on the pulse and get instant feedback. Well, that's one scenario, but what ends up happening is the teachers aren't being given the time to teach the material. And so, I think that that's one piece of information that the school board's been given that they've done absolutely nothing with, despite teachers going to them in school board meetings, in emails. Even the teachers' union has gone and told them that, and they're not doing anything about it. And so, the overtesting is a real concern. I'm not saying, no tests, I think that there absolutely needs to be benchmarks. But the frequency that they're being given is preventing a really good learning environment. So, one of those areas is improving communication and the feedback mechanisms to listen and respond to teacher input, because those are the ones who are working with our kids. Our teachers are heroes, they're the ones who are actually doing the work. Our administration should be in a support role. The administration needs to be supporting our teachers, not telling our teachers what to do.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Councilman Madolin? Councilman Helgason?
You know, we talked a minute ago, or you talked a minute ago about the problems with discipline. You know, the, some of the issues, which I've heard at far and wide, but I've heard the same kind of stories, heard from a teacher that sent a kid to the principal's office and within minutes, the kid came back with a lollipop. The teacher left. Teacher was teaching in elementary school here, is now teaching in Campbell County. Said, "If I don't have the backing." So, would you be one that would say, "I'm going to..." Would you, how do you feel about having strict punishments for bad attitudes, bad behavior, and poor performance?
Yeah, certainly, we've touched on some of this, right? Consistency is key. I think we absolutely need to ensure that these punishments are adhered to and not just waved away. And so, you should never be in a position where a teacher is asking for help from the principal and the principal is ignoring the issue or making it even worse, you know? The lollipop, and I'm not familiar with that exact instance, but taking that on what it is, that's certainly a slap in the face to the teacher for the kid to come back, walk in right back in like nothing happened. And that's not the type of support that our teachers need and that's not helpful to teaching the students that what they're doing is wrong. It's not reinforcing that behavior. So, yes, a strict punishment needs to be done in a way that will teach the kids that we're not going to put up with this and that there's going to be consistency. One of the things is with the discipline particularly, is we, the schools know which kids are the disruptive kids. No one wants to say it, but they know who they are. If you talk to an SRO officer, they can point to about five kids who caused the vast majority of the problems. And yet, those kids are still in the schools. We need to figure out a way, how do we, within the requirements, because we still have an obligation to those kids to do our best, but what can we do to make those kids not be the disruption in the class and bring them onto an alternative track to work with those kids? You know, as, and so, that's in terms of specific discipline to certain things. I think that, I think that mental health plays a major role in this. Especially as somebody who has a child with special needs that are ongoing. And then, you have all the mental health issues that came as a result of COVID, where you have anxiety and depression and stuff. And so, we need to be cognizant of that, but what doesn't mean is excused. If my child misbehaves, I don't just wipe it off and say, "It's okay, you struggle with mental health and I'm going to forgive you." You know, yes, I'm going to forgive you, but there's still, you still have, you did the crime and so, you have to pay for it. And crime is the wrong word to use here, but you did whatever that specific thing was. Yes, we understand, yes, we can be compassionate, yes, we can come at this from a place of understanding, but that doesn't mean there's not consequences.
And as you mentioned early, how many people we've interviewed? You know, we've interviewed, after your interview and we've got one more, there'll be like 16 people that we interviewed. And so, and I look at lots of people that maybe, that applied, that we didn't interview. I look at other people that thought about the school board and I think about all these people that have applied now. And I think about the time that we're in now. I honestly can't think of anybody better positioned to be on the school board than you. So, thank you for putting your name forward, thank you for... You know, the difficulty is for people to stand up to something when somebody, everybody else is going the other direction. I like to appoint somebody who has been at least tested to say, hey, when everybody's going the wrong direction and somebody's saying, "I don't think so." You may need to think twice about this. That shows wisdom, that shows insight, that shows courage, that shows conviction and thinking it through. So, I want to commend you and thank you. And I'll be looking forward to voting for you in this, for the third district on the school board. And again, I know you're very well-prepared for that, so, thank you.
We're almost out of time, so I just wanted to say that, because we have like a minute and a half left. Before, I forgot to say, your comment about the Empowerment Academy. I would encourage you, if possible, to reach out to who runs that and go visit one day, because I think if you go sit down on it, you might have a change of opinion. So, I would say, maybe that experience that you heard of, maybe not connected, just to give them a fair shot. Because I sat in on one of their days and it was actually...
No, they're not, yeah.
But I'd be with you, I've spent a lot of time over there doing programs and they're absolutely...
I would just check it out before you make that association. But do you have a closing statement for us?
I think one of the things that's going to be most effective is a culture change. And certainly, I've addressed some things with regard to leadership in that regard. The students need a culture change too. The students, the students need a purpose. The students need to know that they're valued. And the students need a purpose that's greater than themselves, you know? When they have a reason to be, when they have a direction, when they can point and say, "This is why I'm here and this is who I am and this is how I'm going to serve," and what that purpose is, is not themselves, not self-centered. But when you give them a goal, it's amazing what students can do. One of my favorite books is a book called Do Hard Things. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. It's written by Alex Harris and his brother, I forget his brother's name. But Josh is the older brother, it's actually Alex and his younger brother. And so, the premise of the book is that these teenagers, when they set their minds to it, can accomplish unbelievable things. And I think that that's a really big piece that we really need to focus on. Yes, we have leadership issues, yes, we have behavior issues, yes, we have policy issues. But, the students are what matters. And what's going to be most successful to the students is making sure that they understand what their purpose is and pointing them towards that purpose and helping them fulfill that purpose.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your time, have a good day.
Madam Mayor, up next is FJ Jalil, I do not see him in attendance.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we'll give him a few minutes.
Would it be appropriate to take a few-minute recess and see if I can get in touch with Mr. Jalil?
Sure, take a recess. All right, Mr. Jalil? Come on up.
Madam Mayor, ask is coming up, this is our last interview for the day and we'll close out all three districts.
Hello, Mr. Jalil, thank you for joining us tonight, or this afternoon. Dr. Wilder is not here and Councilman Madolin had to leave for an appointment. So, we are your interviewers, so we will start with Councilman Helgason.
Can our schools improve with the same board leadership that we've had for decades? Many good people, very poor results.
As the saying goes, if you do what you've always done, you'll get what you've always gotten. So, any change is welcome.
So, what do you think we need to do to change?
We need to change the execution of the policies. We need to change the quality of what's offered to the students. We may need to change some staff or board members. It is up to the leaders to make the decision of what to do, but change is the key.
Thank you.
Councilman Missions?
Let me go back to my original page. Mr. Jalil, thank you for being here. Appreciate you stepping up and your willingness to serve on the school board, and thanks for applying. So, I asked this question a couple of times yesterday, and if you were paying attention, you probably heard it, but systems are perfectly aligned for the results they're getting, kind of similar to what Councilman Helgason said. And obviously, the results suggest that the systems need to be realigned, which you just kind of alluded to, because the achievement gap continues to become wider. We're having an inability to retain veteran teachers and our graduation rate is declining. Those are just some high-level examples of issues going on. So, the question that I have really comes down to, as a school board member, making those tough decisions, do you have the courage, if what you're led to and what you see is that there needs to be a sweeping personnel change of people appointed by the school board, people who actually sign the contracts of employees by the school board? Do you have the courage to replace those individuals to get the school district headed in the right direction?
Absolutely. I believe everyone deserves respect. You can tell them in a nice way that we no longer need your services and tell them that they were appreciated, if they had done a good job, but we're moving in a certain direction and we will explain it to them very clearly and then let them know what we believe is the right thing to do.
I love your succinct answers. I got to come up with some more questions. So, thank you for that. So, with that, you are a former substitute, correct? How many years did you substitute?
Since 2021.
Since 21, so you substituted a couple of years?
Yes.
Which schools did you sub in?
Almost all of them.
Okay, all grade levels?
All grade levels, from elementary through high school. I like the going between school and school.
Okay. Are teachers backed up? Do you feel like teachers are backed up in Lynchburg City Schools?
I'm sure a number of them feel that way, but I know that a number of them feel that they are not. They are not really encouraged, encouraged to make their wishes known because they may have some kind of fear of losing their job. It may be unfounded fear, but that's a tendency that, you know, teachers have. They might want to, not want to speak up because of that reason.
What would you say about the organizational culture in the system as far as, you know, the, kind of like the leadership climate, so to speak, from the workforce?
It's different for every school. Every school is unique and has a different leadership group of people and different temperaments and different staff. So, you'd have to look at each one to see which ones are more effective and either copy what they're doing. copy what they're doing at the other schools or make a change where there is no good example. So, there are a number of things that you can do to help the culture to improve and would be looking, I would be looking at everything that is presented to me to say, "Hey, this is a good idea and this is not." Uh, but to make a change is needed and most of the schools can use improvement, but, um, I think I would do it that way.
And what, and I guess I probably should have been a little more detailed in the question. The, the, the relationship from the schools to the senior leadership, the administration, the school board. Do, does the workforce feel like the central office and the school board listen to their concerns? Or does it seem like it's a more centralized operation where how everything is going to be delivered to the student is being pushed down from administration?
I think they put a lot of trust in that the, the leaders are doing their best to give them material that they want to, uh, teach and, uh, pass down through the, the the proper, uh, ranks. But I don't see so many teachers showing up to the school board meetings. I don't see, uh, you know, groups of them getting together and making things, making change, uh, that they may want to see. So, I believe that they can improve in that way. I can, I believe that the administration can improve their connections with the staff, uh, the teachers, and the teachers can improve their, um, their willpower to go up to the administrators and let that, let their wishes be known. This is, uh, this is what I see, this is what I don't like, whether it's about behavior of students or whether it's about pay or whatever it is. They should be free to not feel in fear of their jobs, come up to the, to the top.
Thank you.
Councilor Taylor?
Mr. Phil, how you doing, FJ?
Sir, very well.
Did you, while working in the school system, see that there was a discipline problem between, with students?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent?
In every school. There's always gonna be one or two in, uh, every other classroom, but, uh, in every school there was a discipline problems. I, I have, um, been the object of, you know, a couple of students not being happy with an order, a direction, an instruction. And I've seen students, you know, argue with each other in the hallway, very rude sometimes, but that's with children, you know? That's pretty, pretty common. It's just how you handle it makes all the difference and how, and how you teach them to handle themselves is important.
So, if appointed to the school board, how would you work on the discipline problems in the school?
Getting the parents involved right away. Every time a student gets in trouble, does something wrong, a call should go, a significant, uh, problem, a call should go to the parent. And if it's, uh, whether it's stealing, whether it's cheating, whether it's fighting, whether it's cursing at a teacher, whether it's, um, just not doing any work, a call should be made and a description of two or three things should be given to the parent to make a decision on what should be done with a student. Shall we do the A, B, or C? And it's your choice, but that will be done if that's your wish. And then, and then you simply execute that plan. Every, and you tell the student that this is your parent's choice based on what you have done and, and that's that. Simple.
Thank you.
Sir.
I'd like to for all of you.
Good to see you, uh, as always. Uh, I don't know if you've been watching any of the interviews or the question I've really been now asking for the fifteenth time. Uh, so I'll give you some context, some data, what I would like you to observe from that data and then respond to it. The data is, if you'd like to write it down, be my guest, uh, the data is this, the graduation rate and poverty rates. Oftentimes, uh, there's a lot of questions about or discussion about declining enrollment and how that impacts our, our school system and that has certain validity to it. I would focus more on the graduation rate as, as there are so many factors impacting why folks are choosing the public system versus not and one could be population, one couldn't be, who knows? But the graduation rate is a more consistent level, I think, of gauging what are we doing to meet our number one goal. So, here we go. When asking this question, oftentimes, the question is criticized because we're comparing it to the county. We're right across the street in Bedford and Campbell or, or some, something like that. So, I'll even take a step further, recognizing that criticism, and I'll say, "Here are a list of similar localities, urban situations that have a, a, a densely populated school division, maybe of s- a strong minority population, like similar makeup to Lynchburg." Newport News has a graduation rate of ninety-five point eight. Charlottesville has ninety-three. Stanton eighty-five point seven. Petersburg eighty-seven. Roanoke eighty-five. Harrisonburg eighty-five. And Lynchburg has a graduation rate of eighty point one. That's the bottom of this list. Another criticism of saying, "Hey, we need to make improvement," is, "Well, we have such a, we have, we have an issue with poverty." And we do. It's a massive thing that we all have to, as a city, not just as a city government, but as a community, come together and address. But what I'm, I'm about to articulate is my argument to say it's not just poverty that's holding us back. Newport News has a poverty rate of fifteen point eight. Charlottesville has a poverty rate of twenty-three point one. Stanton twelve point three. Petersburg twenty-one point three. Roanoke eighteen point four. Harrisonburg twenty-five point eight. Lynchburg seventeen point six. Here's what I'm driving at. I know that's a lot of numbers. In this instance, you want a higher graduation rate and a lower poverty rate. Now, you could have an eighty and a twenty, but if that's worse, if that spread is worse than a ninety and a ten, if you will, you see which one takes-
Precedent.
Right. So, you want a wider delta, not a closer one. In this instance, Newport News wins the day with a higher graduation rate and lowest po- popu- poverty rate, excuse me. Lynchburg is actually dead last. We have the lowest graduation rate and the second closest delta, meaning we're at the bottom of the list. In offering this ver- very contextualized question, in my view, in seeking who I want to support for appointment, the number one objective should be to graduate students geared behind academics and making sure they're prepared for, for life. It's been interesting to see how this question's been answered by different people. How will you, as a school board member, strive to make Lynchburg the number one in this list? It's ostensibly, it's hard to compare to the counties right next door, but we can at least compare to those who are similar to us. How will you make Lynchburg focus on that? And I realize when it comes to graduation, there's a lot of other factors. We just don't wanna lower the standards and then boom, we've graduated, but I get all that. But by setting this tone, it's my hope that the school board can say, "If, if this cultural issue or this extra piece or this mandate or what doesn't help us get closer to that objective of graduating students with quality education, we're, we're not gonna focus on it as much." How, how do you take that to the board, hearing that really broad context? I'd be curious how, how you would answer.
I would say perhaps we need to optimize the nonprofit organizations that we have as resources. So, we should use, for instance, LACI, the Lynchburg Sports Initiative. Uh, there's another word there. And we need to help them to help us. And as every student needs some type of physical activity, that will enable them to have some, something to do after school, for instance. Then there's other organizations that help with homelessness, and I think LCS has homeless, uh, aid and program, a program to help them. Uh, it should be optimized. All these programs should be given a higher place in, in our priority for what we're gonna do to make children safe, healthy, and focused on their learning. We can't do it alone. And that's been, that's been the theme. We can, we can see it. It's pretty obvious. We, we can't do it alone. I, I'm not on a position, I'm not in a position to, um, influence that yet, but I do have an opportunity, uh, on the, on the, uh, I, I've helped with the scouts, I've helped with Trail Life, I've helped with Ju- youth groups. I've seen that it's, it's not just the leaders helping the kids, it's, it's outside organizations, outside, uh, leadership. It's, um, i- i- and, and with nonprofit organizations, they solicit funds, they solicit volunteers, they solicit, uh, so much help to help with, with what they're doing. Why can't we do that with them? Solicit them to, to come into our school. Solicit them to help us to, to, uh, teach our students when we, we don't have time to teach our students. Give them, uh, a curricula and say, "Hey, could you spend some time tutoring?" Uh, would, whether it be a nonprofit, uh, that's geared for that or volunteers, faith-based or whatnot, they can do those things and take some of that, um, that gap that we have and as a, LCS, I'm talking like, like I'm part of it, but LCS has and, um, and, and help each other. Give them, give nonprofits some space to come in and do these things and, uh, and have it so that it's, it's something we can report back with. And as far as monetarily, there are organizations for that as well, nonprofit organizations to help the students to, to help their families. Well, not students helping their families as much as, as helping the families help their students to be free from the stress of poverty, the tragedy of poverty. If we help those organizations to identify, perhaps identify, uh, areas or students that need, um, extra help, maybe we can improve the numbers little by little because the numbers are based on families. Every family has a student in LCS schools that, um, that may need, uh, particular help. And if we gear it, we knock down one problem after another, eventually the numbers will separate and we'll have a, a greater gap, which is what you're saying, right? You want a greater gap between those things and be more like, or even surpass Newport News if we can, right?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate what you're saying. I've been, I, I wanna make sure I understand what you're communicating to me. What I hear you saying is utilize what we have in the city, in the region, to bolster, to fill the gaps that were, maybe the public system is attempting to, to meet, but because it's such a broad spectrum of needs for, for young people in the city, you can't meet them all. And so, we're failing on doing the things that we need to do, at least the meat and potatoes, academics, um, as, as a primary. That's what I'm hearing.
Yes, prioritize, emphasize, make greater use of those things. Optimize those programs that already exist and they want to help. Why not really emphasize that interaction between the LCS and all those nonprofit organizations that would love a new base of youth to work with and to tutor and to help if we would simply provide the place for them?
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Jalil. I think what makes, um, you a strong candidate is that you have had the, the experience on the education side as a substitute teacher, which is very valuable and it's very hard. I substitute taught for a couple of years and it's really, it's, it's challenging to be a sub. Um, and then you have, you know, you're on our Youth Services Board, so thank you for serving the city in that way. Um, and then you have all the other experience, um, just working with, with youth and that's really important. So, I think that you can be an advocate from the teaching side of things because you've, obviously, as a sub, you communicate with teachers all day long. I mean, you still are, you know, talking to them and you get that experience from that side of the house, but you also interact with our students and our youth in the city. So, you understand a lot of what our children are dealing with in the city, which is vital because those are your students.
Right.
And so, I think as a school board member, that gives you the understanding of both sides of what we're dealing with, the students and the teachers. Um, we also are dealing with parents too, but I think you, as a sub, still, you know, and depending if you're a long-term sub, you still have parent interaction as well. So, I would ask you, um, if you were a school board member, what do you think would be your greatest strength as an advocate for the students? What would you, how would you advocate, uh, maybe changes that you see are necessary for LCS to make on the behalf of the students?
The students have great needs. They have, um, a lot of issues these days that need to be dealt with. So, as an advocate for students, as part of the job of a school board member, I would make sure they know that their voice can be heard at school board meetings. They're always free to come. They should be able to speak and invited to speak and know when the school board meetings occur, which, um, is very important. And I believe that I can help them to, uh, voice their concerns to the public if they voice them to me. If I go and visit a school and, and, um, and they tell me what their needs are and they don't wanna come to the school board meeting, I can voice those concerns to the school board. And we can all brainstorm together and make decisions on what we can do to improve their lives. I had a student in, um, middle school, I believe. No, it was the fifth grade, so elementary, and, uh, she didn't, she wasn't too excited about recess for some reason. I gave her a project. I said, "If there were ten things you could do to improve school, what would they be? Write them down and I'll give you a prize." But you have to use at least two pages. So, she, you know, skipped sentences, skipped spaces, but she wrote down ten different things and she, she used all her recess time for that. And I gave her the prize. I read through them and I can bring them one day, but the students have cares and they have concerns and some of them are very, very simple. Uh, the use of technology and knowing how to do, do, and learn, teaching students how to learn, not just teaching students what they're supposed to learn, right? They have, they have to know how to learn, teaching students how to be students, especially since they've lost so much time during COVID. So, they may, they may have to relearn, others may have to learn, um, individually and not just as a group. And just advocate for them before their parents or the, or the rest of the parents, um, before the teachers, before the school board in, in public. I think that the students are the, the main point. And if we lose track of that, we've lost our educational system.
So, what about the teachers? What do you think, uh, how can you strongly advocate as a school board member for the teachers? What do you think, um, needs to be, um, said for them that maybe isn't being said?
The teaching profession needs to have joy returned to it. They need to be happy with where they are as teachers and the environment that they are in, whether it is, uh, put there on purpose and it's not effective or efficient or whether it has grown inefficient or ineffective because of whatever reasons, must be addressed in order to help them to enjoy the teaching profession. There's just, uh, I think, if everything is rigorous and everything is, um, too, just down to about the bottom line and everything is just about, everything rote, everything is rote for them, i- it's not, it's not conducive to joy. And I've heard it, I've heard it literally said, using the word joy and, or, and other ways, it's just not as much fun to be a teacher as it used to be because of so much that's added to the teaching, the simple teaching of a, of, 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 of an individual teacher and a student or a teacher in a classroom. There's so much added to their lives that becomes burdensome. It needs to be simplified and allow the teacher to do what they do best, which is love and educate their children. So, let's try to streamline their lives and their professions to focus on that, and I think it'll improve. I think I'll be able to advocate for them that way.
Councilor Missions?
Yeah, um, there was just a, a lot of emphasis on advocating for, for students. Who's the primary customer of the school system?
The primary customer of the school system is the student.
Not the parent?
The parent, you can make an argument for that, but the school system isn't created to educate the parents. It's to educate the students. So, just the way-
But, but who, 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 who do the children belong to?
The parents.
Right. So, so-
I see what you're saying.
It's, it's, yeah. I mean, the primary consumer and customer of the school system is the parents. And I think that that's where we're losing some direction, right? Because children are still children. They are minors, right? And one thing that I have struggled with in watching school board meetings over the years is, um, isn't there, there's some sort of order in the public comment section that people are allowed to speak?
Yes.
And it starts with students, doesn't it? Or staff? I'm trying to remember how, but you, you, you're familiar with what I'm talking about.
I get the important things out, out of the way sometimes, but, uh, there's a-
And, and, and the, the, that's reverse. The parents should be first when it comes to voicing concerns and having advocates. The parents should be first when it comes to voicing concerns and having advocates on the school board. Because I can tell you right now, my children are not gonna advocate to the school board against my will and my wishes for them. Right? And this is government. And there's some dangerous positions being taken right now at different levels where we have leaders in the federal government saying that they're everyone's children. They're not. These children belong to their parents. And I have great concern when the primary focus and the consumer of the school system is not considered as the parents because they are ultimately responsible, the parents and the guardians of these children for them. Now, I loved your answer about calling the parent first when it comes to discipline. Absolutely, right? But the parent needs to be first in everything that happens in the school system. Period. Parents want their children to succeed. It doesn't matter what zip code they live in, what neighborhood they live in, what their socioeconomic status is, what their race, creed, color, religion is, their orientation, none of that. Something that can we all, we can all easily unify around is parents wanting their children to succeed. So, after all this talk about advocating for kids, I'm not up here to be a parent of all of the children of the city of Lynchburg. That's not my job. How are we going to advocate for parents and parental rights in Lynchburg City Schools first and foremost and stop the government from trying to be the parent of the child?
Transparency is key. The parents should be informed about what's going on before, during, and after a public school. If we can get the parents involved, which has been a lifelong issue for school systems in, in every state, then you'll improve not only school learning outcomes, but the school environment, probably the income. All these different things are affected by parent parental involvement or non-involvement, not being involved. So, I would do as much as possible to get the parents involved. Incentivize the parents to get involved, whether it's that question about this school discipline or whether it is letting them know about all these programs that are available to their student. And actually, being on the Youth Services Advisory Board, we came across the issue of there are many services for the, the particular type of students that we deal with that the families just don't know about. They don't take advantage of it because it's not there. So, there's a gap, but, but it's on the school website, but it's in the school paperwork. But it's, it's posted on a couple of, you know, bulletin boards around the city. And still, so many parents do not know what's going on or what's available for their child. So, we were talking and discussing about how we can get to make sure that when a program is, when a program has something for their child, it's, it's just very well fitted for them. We can make sure they know about it. How can we do that? Emphasize it. Emphasize it, whether it's, it's emails and bulletin boards and phone calls and school announcements. And I think grades should be mailed to the parents so that the kids can't hide them for weeks or, and surprise their parents one day. Oh, I failed this class or whatever, you know?
Do they have to sign them and send them back?
Say it again?
Do they have to sign the report cards and send them back or the grades or anything like that?
I don't know that particular, but I want to make sure that parent, do more to get the parent involved. More little things, whether, it doesn't matter if it's that small, mailing something to the parent or, or emailing. Just making sure that there's many touches that the school system makes to get them continually, their mind involved. And maybe something will click with them one day and they'll get, they wanna get much more involved.
Response required.
Yeah, there's some things that are, some things, some things are required, I'm sure.
Required responses from parents on certain issues.
Right, right. You want, you want to, to help them to make their own decision, of course, but if there's, to incentivize them with something that's, that's mutually beneficial is the way I think it should be, as many, as much as possible before you mandate, hey, get over here and deal with this, right? So, we
Because I, I would love to see a shift in the, in the culture in Lynchburg that, that could spread throughout where school board meeting, public comment sections were for parents first. Because that's the primary consumer of the school system.
Yes, I see the importance of that very much.
Okay, so we're almost out of time. But just before you get misrepresented on a Facebook post, I wanna give you the opportunity to say, if you would like, would you like to clarify because of your statements? I was asking you because of your experience, because I know that you're not a parent because of your experience with students and as a teacher that you, you know, had the position to be able to advocate on those behalf since you're not a parent.
That's correct.
But, but do you, do you agree that parents should be the advocates for their children?
Hundred percent.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have anything else to say as a closing statement?
Well, I think that it's a great opportunity. I think that I want you to choose the best persons for each district and it's very important. You know, everything rises and falls on leadership. So, you're going to impact and make the, the difference by making these decisions. And you want people to improve what exists, not maintain what exists. You want people to take things, just like any coach would want to, every, every new season, look for new players to make a decision on the ball, the ball field. You wanna do that with every organization. But sometimes you have a superstar, you may wanna keep one. Sometimes you have a whole roster that you need to change. It's up to, it's up to each individual situation. So, I pray that you make the right decisions and I look forward to hearing what your decisions are. But we know that we're all in this together for the schools, right? For the, for the students and for the parents. I mean, that's who we're here to help, so let's do it.
Thank you much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, FJ.
The meeting is now adjourned. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at four PM here in Council Chamber.